I guess I could have waited till you were live, but hey, we're, we've started. Cody, take it away.
Somebody to turn on my mic. To begin with, do you guys have any specific questions about property tax? Before we like start talking about property tax?
Well, can you was there? Was it what you thought it was gonna be? Was there surprise? Was it surprising?
So, okay, well, let's just jump right into it then. So.
One question, I guess. Can you explain? I know we've talked about it before. The small increase that we do get every year, because it said a dollar amount. So I understand it's a dollar amount. So every year the tax rate drops. How do they calculate? Is it just, hey, you had this much growth, so we take the original dollar amount and then we add a percentage to it based off of the new number of people that live in the cities? Is that all it is?
Yeah, and I'm not exactly sure how the county does all the magic. No, and so they take. I think how it works is the valuations, the first part. So they value all the properties. And then, once they have it all valued, then that's where the assessor gets involved and they come in and look at it and they say, okay, far west needs. Last year they got $330,000 worth of property tax value, so we need their rate to be this to, to get them that. And then they look at how much new growth we have.
And so that new growth is just, like I say, a certain percentage of.
So the new growth is actual new growth?
Yeah, but I mean, like I say, so if we, every year if we had a 5% growth, they really kind of take that number and bump it up to equivalent the number before with how much the city's grown, but if it stopped growing, then that number would stop growing, right?
Right. So in theory, maybe just a tiny bit difference. So they, in theory, what they should do is they should look at all the properties that were in existence as of January 1st of the prior year and say, okay, they were valued like 800,000, now they're worth, or 800 million, now they're worth 900 million. So we need to adjust the property tax rate this amount to get you the same amount of revenue. And then they'd say, and by the way, there's this many new. And so at that same tax rate, that gets you another $20,000. Does that make sense? So in theory, that shouldn't even come into the calculation until at the end when they're tying the rate to that new value.
So but the next year, when they look at that dollar amount.
Then they would combine it. So say we were like 300,000 one year and we had 30,000 in growth. Then the next year, when they looked at it, would start at 330.
That's what I was wondering. They would take it from the last year's number.
Right.
So that's where the new growth comes in.
Right.
And they did on last year's stuff. And then they use that number to do the math to go, this is how, plus the growth at that rate.
Right.
The new.
Right. And it's not 100% that, because then there's like centrally assessed and all these other like kind of crazy things, but in general terms, really simplified, that's what it is.
And the new growth is just an estimate, really. I mean, really, they set the basis, this is your guarantees, we know you have this much value. The new growth just comes in, but then they match it from last year, really is what they do, right?
Kind of. They actually track like the growth and so they look at it property by property, because that's how you're able to go in and like protest your value. And so they can actually like look at it and say, okay, this property is like, can just build a new house, so, so that's new. But everybody else's houses were here last year, so his is new growth, but everybody else was existing.
I just want to make sure I understood, because I, you know, you look back over the trend and it's gone from like 280 up to 315s. It's not over, you know, eight or whatever years, you know, $30,000 isn't that much it's grown, but it's really just that new growth's the only change.
Right, right. And then like we've talked about before, just because we assess like the 315 doesn't mean that everybody pays that 315, so our actual might end up lower. Or we might have people who are delinquent from a couple of years who paid, so we might end up a little higher, so it's never perfect, but it's usually pretty close.
And I understand that.
So. So we can kind of answer Counselor Williams' question. Would you mind scrolling down to the third page, Lindsay? So this sheet hopefully kind of looks familiar. So this is, it's similar to what we talked about last work session. So now that Weber County is done doing all of their calculations and stuff, I was able to take my guesses and go back and get exact numbers from them. So this is their calculation of the average home values in far west for the last four years. And then you can see, here's what our property tax rate has done over the last four years. So you can see as the, as the home values have increased, that rate has decreased. Now, this year, there's kind of a little bit of an anomaly, because in theory, so you can see the last year, our proposed tax rate value was 778 million. This year it's 988 million. So it went up by 26.86%. However, our rate only dropped 17.69%. So in theory, if it was perfect, you'd anticipate that those numbers would almost be identical, right? So our tax rate stayed a tiny bit higher than I would have assumed it would have been. But that's just based upon their calculations. And you can see that kind of reflected here in the like city property tax estimate per resident. I mean, it hasn't went up a lot, right? But it went up $8 over the prior year. So then what I did on this lower portion, and once again, if you have any questions, please interrupt me as we're going, so we can talk about it. So if we held the rate, so we've got the same rate as up here as last year, based upon my calculations, which aren't going to be perfect, because they round and we're talking about $988 million. But if they're be close, we would generate about $74,000 of additional tax revenue if we held the rate. And so that just simply means we'd still have to go through truth and taxation and everything, but instead of letting that rate drop down, we'd keep the same rate as the last year. And so that would mean that each residence would pay, based upon this 604 average value, each residence would pay about $141 instead of the 108. And so it'd be about $25 more per year over what the certified tax rate is, or about $2 a month. If we wanted $100,000, then the, if everybody had the average value residence, they would pay $150. So it'd go up about three bucks, 154 a month, 200, about 560, 300,000, about $100 a year, 840 a month. So that's kind of what we're looking at. I, I mean, just based upon all this information, it wouldn't surprise me if we ended up collecting a little extra in property tax, just because the values went up 27% and the rate only dropped 17%. So I mean, I mean, it's not going to be a ton, but even based upon like their kind of own calculations, it looks like we should collect a little extra. So I don't know if you have any questions. So I can go back here and if I need to, I don't know. So you can see, this is their calculation. So see, this is how they come up with the certified tax rate. And then you can see with that rate, then that gives them our revenue. So if we do the same thing, if we just approve the certified tax rate tonight, that's what we would get, is that 344. If we were to hold the rate, just like down below, I can show you like, we'd get like the 419. So you can see my calculation's pretty darn close, because that's what I calculate on their website, and that's what I calculate by my formula here is 419. And that would be a 21% increase in the rate. And then if we wanted to do, I can't remember, oh, I just did like a .005 rate. That would generate about $494,000. So it'd generate a little extra for us, like 150,000. So I don't know if you have any questions. I think last time we talked about this, this is the requirements for truth and taxation. There's two things here. So this is kind of a checklist and this is in Dropbox if you have questions. So you do like a first publication and you do it two weeks before the hearing, and then you do another publication a week before the hearing. You've got to do like a screenshot and stuff, so you can provide it to, to the state, so they know you did it. Then we'd actually hold the public hearing to introduce it and approve the budget. And then we'd fill out this form PT 800 and send it in, and then we'd have our new property tax rate. And you can see that same thing here, just kind of in a checklist. So if more than one entity is going through it, then the county actually sends out that first notice and we'd just be responsible for the second one. So.
This, holding the rate is what we had talked about, is like, but every year we have to do truth and taxation.
That's the bad part, is right now, every year, if we want to hold the rate, you have to do truth and taxation. So like I talked to South Ogden's finance director this year, or this week, and South Ogden's been doing it for five years. So they've adopted like a sustainability module, model. And so each year, as part of that sustainability model, they review their tax rate through the truth and taxation process. So they just automatically go through it to, they feel like it gives them like extra time to do deal, due diligence on the budget and on the tax rate. And then they decide what they want to do. And a lot of times, like we talked about a couple of weeks ago, whatever rate you guys choose tonight, if we go through truth and taxation, that's the maximum. So like sometimes South Ogden's chose a rate in June or May when they approve it, and then they've ultimately ended up pulling it down some, because they're like, well, we don't need quite that much money. As they continue to me. You can't go up. So you're right, you could back off.
And you can do, you do that before you approve the final budget.
Right. So if we decide tonight, so I prepared everything kind of as normal. But I talked to Ryan, I'm like, what do you want to do? And he felt like we were okay. So technically, if we don't approve the, the final budget tonight and we went through truth and taxation, you would approve a higher tax rate, then technically we wouldn't even have to do the final budget adoption if you don't want, because in reality, we're not going to adopt it until August. And.
Another preliminary?
Yeah, kind of.
Kind of?
Yeah, I mean.
We even need to do that?
We wouldn't even have to if you didn't want to. What some cities do, if they, like South Ogden, where they already know they're going through truth and taxation, they actually adopt. Because what state law says is your last adopted tentative budget or your last adopted amended budget rules for those couple month period while you don't have a budget. And so they've actually, they'll adopt like an acting budget. It's just an updated tentative budget at this meeting. And that's what they use for those couple months until they adopt their final budget. So.
So a question for you. So I understand, holding the rate, that means regardless of what the economy is doing year to year, that's the rate?
That's the rate, yeah. So the only bad thing in, and I don't have it on here. If you remember, we could probably go back to Dropbox and pull it up. If the, so say we hit a bad recession this fall and everything drops, then our property tax rate will go up for next year. Because if the home values drop, the rate's got to go up to get us the same amount of money.
We're guaranteed this amount this year because it's already been assessed.
And.
Change on those values this year, because they're not going to change. Home prices aren't going to change before December, because they've already been valued for the year.
But with this, like if we set this rate at, you know, .0050, that's just a higher rate, but doing the same thing we're doing now, just getting the same pot of money.
The reality is, is all we've done is we haven't really, we're holding the rate, but all we've done is come up with a new fixed number that next year they would match.
Right. So next.
Okay, okay, with this.
It's really just, I mean, yes, we're holding that rate, but really, we're just coming up with, this is our new base number. And next year, they guarantee us that number and just change the rate to make sure we got it. So the houses prices dropped, the rate would go up. If they went up, the rate would drop. We'd just be going into the same scenario again.
Right. So, so just to reemphasize what Josh is saying, so like if we did the .005, we'd almost get 500,000. So next year, if we had a recession, they would guarantee us the 500,000. But our rate would probably be .0065 or something higher.
Values go down.
Because the values would go down.
If they go down.
If they go down.
They didn't go down even in 08.
Right, right.
Typically don't go down.
They typically don't. And like in 10, they did drop. If you look at the city historical rates, you can actually see the property tax rate go up because the values did drop, but then it was just a couple of years and then they went right back up, right? But see, your property tax amount you paid wouldn't have changed, even though, because we're still guaranteed the same amount of money, right?
So essentially, a homeowner would be paying more or less money if that.
The same. And that's how Utah, see, you can see that kind of right here. So you can see, it's not perfect, but more or less, over these last three years.
Okay, because the home values are going up.
Right. They've paid the city the same $100 every year.
Okay.
Even though that rate and the valuations change. So it's kind of, I mean, in, they could simplify it a ton and just say, okay, far west gets $100 from everybody, but they don't do that because they like to value it and have a rate and all that jazz. So.
So even our certified tax rate would still change based on values.
Right.
But we just get the same amount of money.
Right.
I have to like.
Really holding the rate. Really holding the rate is just saying, we want this much money.
Right.
So holding the rate is just, is kind of a way of saying, we're not going to charge you any more than last year, but we're going to charge you more than last year. Because it sounds like.
They are.
Okay, right.
We're, we're just looking at what the rate currently is. If we keep it, this is our new number, which would be the 419, so 420,000, right?
Right. Because in reality, we're saying, hey, like, we're just going to charge you the same rate as last year, but we all know we're getting more money from you. So it's, as long as values go up. So it's, it just sounds like an easier sell is basically what it is.
Rather than raising our property taxes.
Rather than incrementally raising your property taxes, we're holding the rate, which does the same thing.
If we do anything but accept the .00349, we have to go through truth and taxation.
Unless you want to go down, but we don't want to do that.
We don't want to go down.
Okay.
So you're right. So if we do anything below that, we have to go on truth and taxation, even if we want to have a dollar more, we would have to go through truth and taxation.
But it does seem easier to swallow. I mean, I don't know why.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Because then it's like, we do, I mean, it's a lot of work though every year, right?
Right, right. So it's kind of up to you guys. Like I talked last time, I balanced the budget this year. So we don't, it's not like we're in dire straits that we've got to do it. It's just, it is a good time and everybody else is doing it, not that that's justification for us to do it. So it's like, do we want to do it? And it's been a while since we've done it. And so. Right. So it really comes down to, is there other stuff you want the city to do? Because if there's more you want the city to do, then we probably need more money. So like, if you wanted to bite off $75,000 more road projects this year that are in the budget, then we should probably hold the rate. If you're okay with everything where it is, then if you have the understanding that next year, if there's a recession or if the sheriff's office goes up significantly, we're going to have to raise property taxes. And if you're willing to do that, then that's great too. We can probably adopt everything as normal tonight and just play it year by year. It's, it's really up to you guys what you would like to do.
Just a little input into the conversation I talked, and Josh, I don't know if you were told this as well about the phase one of Public Works building. They opened the bids yesterday. They came in higher than expected because of materials. So we're going to have some discussions about even how do we do phase one?
Right. And some of that, like, do you want to still do it now? Do you want to wait and see what the economy does? You know, like, all those come into play, right? So I think the original number was like 800,000, right, Mayor? And the bids were like 1.1s, we're short a couple hundred thousand. So do you want to raise property taxes a couple hundred thousand dollars to do that facility this year? But, you know, like, that's kind of some of the things that would come into play. And we do have some money in capital that we could use to, and we can allocate across, that across the different enterprise funds too, so all that doesn't have to come out of the general fund.
Is our, our extra for public safety is coming out of the general fund?
Yeah. So any increase in the sheriff's comes out of.
What was the sheriff's this year?
What was that?
What was the sheriff's increase this year?
So it went from, do we have Dropbox from last month still in here?
I can pull that up. I, I just didn't know if you.
Where do I go? Council? And then, when did we have our last, was it the second that we did our public?
Yeah, I was.
Bottom one. Nope.
Sorry. This one right there. Okay, yeah, let's pull this up really quick. So let's go back just a second. So see, here you can see what I was talking about, about in 2010. You can see our property tax rate. We did an increase that year, so that's not a great year to look at. But you can see like in 12, like that's when the recession was going on. You can see our rates actually went up in 11 and 12 over 10 because of the recession there. And then you wanted to talk about sheriff stuff. So right here. So you can see, this is what our sheriff's bill has been. And you can see, they changed their methodology, if you remember. So 2012, it was quite a bit lower and they changed how they assessed it, how like they billed us for it.
We went up to .007.
Right. So you can see, we did a tax increase trying to capture what their rate would be. And for this year, if you remember, I'm budgeting about, it's going to be like 705,000. However, that's spread over the fiscal year. So.
So we're, we're in the hole, sheriff's expensive expenses.
Right.
This year, $286,000.
No, we're not in the hole.
We just.
You're saying if only property tax has covered it, then yes. But I mean, if you look at it, I mean, we have an increase of looking at 2022 to 2023 with sales tax and all the, everything else, we've had an increase of $400,000. So I mean, yes, property tax wise, it doesn't cover it, but we've had other revenue sources go up that covers it.
And if you think about that, remember we talked like, as a budgeting best practice, you use property tax to cover this. However, if you think about it from like a realistic standpoint, so what's the sheriff doing when he's in far west? You know, like he's, like, say he goes to domestic disturbance, that's probably a property tax, like that, like if you were billing that to the revenue source that paid for it, then that should probably go to property tax, right? Because that's people who live here. But say that somebody gets in a wreck at Smith and Edwards, which happens frequently, right? Like, how should that be paid for? Probably out of sales tax, because more than likely, that's probably somebody that doesn't even live in far west. It might be, but it's probably somebody who doesn't live in far west that's shopping at Smith and Edwards. So how are they contributing revenue wise to the city? They're contributing through sales tax. Exactly. So it's not bad that property tax isn't 100% funding this, because you kind of got to look at where the expense is being incurred with the sheriff's office. So, and if we go back, so any other questions? These are all great questions.
So you're saying it's not, you were saying from 600 to?
It's 705 is what they've got it for, for next year.
Not that's 600.
Not that's 600. So that's the estimate for the current year. And they always, and it's weird, because they bill us based upon the officers. And if you remember, Mayor Dickamore talked to him and said, okay, because they've had a problem like filling all their officer positions. So he's like, okay, well, if you can't fill the position, then you can't build a city for it. Because they don't really, they're not really incurring the cost, right? And so even though they say, right, or they reduce the amount of our bill.
Right.
And so it's like, they give us a bill and say, okay, it's almost like worst case, like this is your worst case bill. And then depending on what happens, right, right.
But it's estimated to be 705,000.
For 2023, for the year we're, we're adopting the budget for. Correct, correct. Yep.
And then sales tax is kind of up in the air for next year.
Right. Like, like we've talked, sales tax is highly volatile, right? Because as long as like Smith and Edwards is open and they have stuff to sell and people have money to spend, then sales tax is awesome. If a recession hits, then, you know, like, do people have as much free cash flow to like go spend at Smith and Edwards? Maybe, maybe not. So it is a little unknown. Right.
You're not going to get anything done there for a while.
For a couple of days at least, right?
Right.
But I mean, you're showing a 13% increase, sales tax, which is a huge increase in revenue for the city.
Right. And if you look at, if you look at a few things here. Hold on, let me go back and show you a couple of other things. Let's change gears for just one second and talk about the budget for the current year. So, let's look at, I'm actually going to talk about budget amendments really quick. So you can see my budget amendments for the year. As I looked at stuff, because I'm still finishing May, because I've been working on so many like budget things, I haven't got May all the way wrapped up. But when I looked at stuff, I was a little worried we're going to have too much money left over, so we needed to do a bigger transfer to the capital projects. So that's what my budget amendment is, is to increase the transfer to the capital projects fund, because sales tax is going crazy right now, right? And so I'm showing that we potentially, and we don't ever know what our sales tax is, if you remember, because we don't actually get June cell ta, sales tax until August. So I'm projecting what it'll be, but until August, I don't actually know how much sales tax we collected for the year. So I'm just kind of guessing right now where we're at.
Don't they do some weird math with the difference between, like how much sales tax is collected in the city versus the population?
So.
For instance, I've heard Riverdale is, we think Riverdale's just flowing in money because
Right.
that whole place is nothing but retail.
So Riverdale, like, everything hurt Riverdale in 2005, because in 2000, prior to 2005, sales tax for the state of Utah, 75% was allocated based upon the point of sale. So if you went and bought something at Smith and Edwards, 75% of your sales tax would go to far west. Then the other 25% went into a pool and they took the population of all of the state and they allocated that 25% based upon the population. In 2005, they said, hey, we have cities who are kind of fighting over businesses, because it's more advantageous for them to have them in their city than adjacent. So they said, let's make this more fair, and they changed it to 50/50. So that's when like Riverdale was like, ah, like, what are you doing to us? So now, like, if somebody goes and buys something at Smith and Edwards, 50 cents of that goes instantly to far west. Then the other 50%, 50 cents goes into a pool and gets allocated between all the population of the state. So communities like, so it depends on the community, like, so, so West Haven, I looked at them recently, they're almost 50/50. So 50% of their sales tax comes from point of sale, 50% of it comes from population. They're almost like perfectly balanced. But then if you look at like a Kaysville, how much retail does Kaysville have? Not a whole lot. And so I can't remember what Kaysville is, but let's just guess. So they're like 80% population, sales tax driven, and 20% point of sale. So depending on the municipality and what they have, depends on where their money comes from. I think we're about like, I can't remember, we're pretty close to the 50/50, like 60/40, somewhere right in there. It's been just a minute since I looked at that. But that's how sales tax is driven. So, but I just wanted to point out, like, we are doing really well this year. And even like in the final budget adoption, so I've got the final budget. So these are the changes I made from the tentative budget. So I ended up adjusting our property tax, because by state law, it's got to match that certified tax rate. So I adjusted it down 30,000 to match it. I took part of that change out of sales tax, and then remember, we talked about stopping charging the streetlights fees. So I pulled that out of the budget and offset that with, with our sales tax. So, but then if you come down here. So current year actual, and this is as of May, and so we'd still have a couple of months worth of sales tax in there. We're at 1.5 million. I had budgeted that we'd be at 1.3, so we're like 200,000 over. And we still have two months worth of collections there. And we still have two months worth of collections there. And. Um, that's, let's see, I'm trying to think like.
And I could do the math.
I want to say like it's like a hundred and eighty thousand or something. I'm on that work math wise. Yeah, I think it's about that.
So we're gonna see a huge increase.
So we'll probably be over by a couple hundred thousand. So then you can see next year after all my changes for the budget. My budget number for sales tax is one point five million. So it's actually less than we are right now with two months to go.
You've been way conservative almost on that number.
Yeah, but you know, like, who knows what's gonna happen next year? You know, if the bottom falls out of stuff in December, we may not hit the one point five.
So in the last, what are the numbers over the last three or four years on sales tax?
Um, I don't know if I have that in a chart or not. I can get it for you. It's been slowly increasing. And the last couple of years since twenty twenty, it's went up more significant. I could go back and pull up.
One point five?
Yeah. Can you type in, you have the keyboard, right? Do you have any other questions while I'm looking this up?
So the only other question I have, and I was trying to see the number, I know it's still up in the air. Last year, you know, we talked about revenue sources and we we approved the energy and that tax. Estimating that was going to be kind of another kind of fixed kind of resource.
Right.
Remind me again what your estimate is that we'll be collecting on that?
So remember, we don't know exactly what it's gonna be.
Asking your estimates, I know we're still.
So this year, year today, I think we had collected about seventy eight thousand since January. So and we had guessed would be somewhere between a hundred and three hundred thousand. Now, the thing to keep in mind, so that's the municipal energy and telecom tax. So if you think about energy usage, so that's charged, if you remember on your Rocky Mountain Power bill and your Quest Star bill or Dominion Energy, sorry.
And then two, that was like, isn't that on?
Also on like the telecom and yeah, cell phones and things too. But if you just think about energy for a second. We started assessing that in January. So if you think about your bill, unless you're on equal pay, most time you're spending the most on gas, right? And like November, December and January. And then you're spending the most on power and probably like June, July and August. So we haven't even hit some of the best months yet for that. And by best, I mean like the highest producing. And so we still might hit like the three hundred thousand or so. I just don't know until. Well, I think like a hundred and fifty. I bumped it up. I got two hundred grand in there. And you can see this year, oh, you know what? We've got another payment since I looked at it last. So we're up to ninety five thousand for the year already.
That's only six months.
And it's not even quite six months because it's like. It's kind of like some of it, like Rocky Mountain Power has been paying us at the end of every month. But everybody else necessarily hasn't been. So we've got like four and a half, five and a half, something like that in there. So my guess is we might still hit like close to the three hundred thousand. So for twenty nineteen. Hold on, I'm almost there.
Just everybody knows Boyd's getting stuck in traffic. He'll be a little bit late. So that's why he calls.
So our sales tax in twenty nineteen was almost one point three million. And then in twenty twenty, it went up and we can look up exactly what it was. But it's just been slowly going up in the last couple of years with the economy being crazy, it's went up faster.
We have attracted a few more businesses right to the city.
Right.
Kubota helps.
Yeah, like Kubota and places like that, that's awesome for, see, we were one point four in twenty twenty.
Well, and remind me, because we talked about sales taxes point. So when someone's on their computer at home ordering something and it charges them sales tax, where is that collected?
It goes to where the good is delivered. And see, so for twenty twenty one, we collected one point seven.
And we're probably going to be about that same number this year.
I bet we passed that. So we're probably going to be like one point eight, one point nine, and I'm budgeting one point five for this year. So it's based upon where it's delivered. So like if you.
They're having stuff delivered more at home.
If you want the sales tax to go to far west.
It's good having it delivered to work.
Well, it's because I'm at work. If I get out of home, it's sitting on my porch. I'm gonna have to start delivering here to the city offices.
There you go.
I'm single handedly supporting the income, far west city. Instead of more property tax, we just buy more stuff on Amazon.
So once again, cities like K'sville that have like tons of residents, when they change that 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 you got it, like it's huge for them. But then cities like us, we don't gain as much from it because we just don't have quite as many residents.
Well, no, I, I, thanks for all of, I know I've had lots of questions. As I look at all this stuff, I mean, I told you last time. I mean, I feel it's important that we are responsible and we pay attention to what we're doing with other people's money. And it still is really hard for me because I see, I understand, you read the news and they, there's a recession coming. But I also look at the last couple of years. And you know, the numbers we're seeing and the increases and I, I do feel like it's hard to increase and ask for more when it's really, I mean, we've seen a huge increase these last two years in revenue, even though it's not property tax, we've seen a huge increase in revenue.
Right. And that's why I think it really comes back to what do you want to do with that money? Because if there's something you want to do that's really beneficial for the taxpayers, then it's.
Yes, them, it's give them their money back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But at the same time, they want the sheriff driving. And yeah, until they want a sidewalk in their neighborhood for their kids to go to school on or until they need a policeman to respond to a call or or whatever the case may be.
I guess that's, that goes back to you mentioned earlier, I mean, based off our numbers right now, you're changing things to roll a bunch of stuff over into capital improvement projects. How much money are we sitting on there that we could use for these other?
I don't know until everything's done. So like, well, you can see my budget amendment form here, if I remember which item that is. I'm, I'm showing our our potential rollover to be one point two million. I don't know if we'll quite be that high. I'm hoping it's less than that so that we're in under budget. But you know, like, it could be a little higher. I don't know.
So I mean, in theory, if instead of eight hundred thousand or three hundred thousand over that, we have money that we can still keep that project going.
Right, right. And then if the other thing to keep in mind is we're proposing rate increases in most of the enterprise funds. And part of that facility is for the sewer and is for the stormwater and stuff like that. And so those rate increases, that's really going to help fund their portion too. And so like in theory, we're in, we're okay. You know, like, it's not like we have to do it tonight. I think this has been a great discussion, even if we decide not to do anything. Just because my job's a lot easier the more you guys understand. And I think having all these meetings and discussions and stuff, like, I think you guys understand it a lot better. And hopefully I've explained it in a way that you understand it more. And so then.
I just wish every citizen could have an opportunity to sit here and look through this and get educated because you know, most of them don't understand property tax at all and how it's collected. They don't understand the budget and what goes into running a city. And so, yeah, it's. I've learned a lot these last few years. I'm sure Katie and Janelle are getting a crash course right here. But you know, and it is difficult because you know, we are out and I've got neighbors I've talked to about this and it's, you know, some of them completely understand others. Wish that they didn't have to pay taxes at all. And if it's not justifiable, they don't see why the city should be charging more. And I understand that. So like I say, it's it's a big balancing act and I mean, as I've kind of shared right now with the numbers the city's been collecting, yes, I, it is scary to see what could happen next year, but I hate to jump to unknown conclusions too quickly. That's just my thoughts, but I appreciate Cody. It's been great. So.
And the one thing I would prefer to do going forward is try to do like incremental increases. That's why a lot of the cities are doing the whole rate. Because it's easy to just do these littler increases. They're easier for their residents to swallow. And not go so long without a tax increase. Like we would have had to do a property tax increase if the last couple of years hadn't been so amazing for sales tax, but it really has been amazing for sales tax. And so it's really kind of saved us.
So if you were to suggest an incremental tax increase, it would be to that for for amount, four or four six?
Yeah, probably any of these really. I mean, at the end of the day, like I told you last time, I live here too. So it's not like I want to pay a ton more. But I think any of these really are pretty reasonable. I mean, even at this one, we're really only asking residents maybe to pay another like seventy dollars a year. And so, but once again, do they understand that? They're probably not going to understand that. They're going to understand when the standard says, hey, you know, the city's raising their property tax sixty percent.
I even talked to someone in the neighborhood the other day, you know, property taxes. He goes, well, my property tax has gone up. I said, right, but not the city. Not the city property tax, but yes, your taxes have gone up, but any increase is.
Like you say, when you're in a recession, then they think, oh, my house value has gone down. So then you guys need more money and it makes more sense to them.
Right, right. That's where it's an easier sell this year because they're looking at their neighbors selling their houses and they're like, yeah, home values are going up, like that makes sense that I'm paying a little more in property tax. And so that's where this year, and everything is just expensive, right? You go to the grocery store and it's like, holy cow, I got two bags of stuff and it was a hundred bucks. Like, what happened?
I went to buy Cholula today, six dollars. A bottle of Cholula.
So remember when we were thinking about doing the, that road fee, basically, can't remember what we called it?
I think it was a transportation fee.
The transportation fee. What was that going to be for a person per month?
So I, I think it depended because if you remember, they gave us like three different options. I think so. I think there was one that was like three dollars a month. There was one that was like seven or eight dollars a month. And then there was one that was like ten or twelve dollars a month.
Right, depending on, that, that was kind of based on the longevity of roads and all of that.
Right.
Stuff.
Right.
How ahead on the road you wanted to be.
Right, yeah, how proactive and stuff we wanted to be. So you can see like, if we wanted to charge kind of like the middle of the road on that, we could charge this and it'd be about a hundred dollars a month for a resident or eight forty or sorry, eight forty a month or a hundred dollars a year and it would generate about a hundred, three hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue.
You know, I, I do appreciate what Josh said is how easy is it to justify when we're having to move a bunch of extra money into other funds? Does, you know what I mean? Like, and I hadn't really thought of that. I'm just thinking, oh, well, our property taxes should pay for our public safety, but you're right, when you're making all these transfers into other funds, like. But I mean, you see the, the first increase is only what, twenty five thousand dollars a year? So it's not, it's not huge. Like, how much difference does it really make in an overall budget?
Right. Right. So that's where I think it really comes back to you guys deciding. If we do an increase, what do you want to do with it? Because if you want to do, and I always get that road name wrong, but if you want to do, is it twenty six seventy five?
Twenty five seventy.
Twenty five seventy five. If you want to do twenty five seventy five this year, I think the estimate on it was like six hundred thousand. So if we did this, that would pay for like half of that road project potentially. So you know, I think that's easier to say, hey, we're raising taxes and we're starting to put that money towards. To, yeah, and that, you know, like the people in that neighborhood are going to be happy, like the people, like my neighborhood who's over here, they probably don't. They're like, well, you didn't fix my road, but you raised my taxes. So you know, I can keep everybody happy, but so. So like, let me just re summarize. I think we're fine to to go forward with things as normal if you would like. But know that more than likely, we'll probably have to do this next year. So you know, like, or if you wanted to do it this year, then maybe we don't have to do it next year and we could wait a year or two to do it. We'd just have to see what the economy does and where everything's at.
If we move forward with that kind of like incremental increase, like you were, you were talking about, would that be something that we would do, we would need to do every year? Would it be like every other year? What do you kind of see that?
It kind of depends on what you guys want to see. I mean, if we want to develop like a sustainability model, kind of like South Ogden's done. And you've looked at it and you want to look at it like this in depth every year. Then yeah, we could look at it every year. Like some cities like Ogden, they've decided, hey, it's easier if we just do it every other year because it is a lot of work and it's really time consuming and and would rather just kind of look at it every year, every other year. And so we're going to get an increase and then we're going to kind of be level and then we'll get an increase. It's really up to you guys. And we can kind of look at it as needed, you know, if the sheriff's office goes up a ton or something else changes a ton, then we can say, okay, we need to look at it this year because you know, we may have to look at it two years in a row, depending on what happened.
Speaking with most of the other mayors within Weaver County, this is just data. I don't think there's any of them not doing truth and taxation this year.
And I, I just have a.
We could be the ones that don't, and that's okay with.
I appreciate your insight about like the transferring money over. I just am so concerned about what this time next year looks like.
I agree.
With the, and I'm not an economist, but you know, the Fed raised interest rates and you're seeing gas prices, inflation is crazy. And I just like, I'm, I'm really fearful that we're headed for a recession.
Well, I'm, I'm with you. And then sales tax drops. And if that's our next biggest source of revenue. That's problematic.
Sales tax is actually bigger. So.
Right.
Right, right, right.
And so this, this kind of goes into the, when we start discussing general plan type things and wanting to encourage retail, right? That's something that we need to understand and be a part of our whole plan of.
For sure. So like when you're looking at the general plan, like do you want to let Marriott Sladeville annex stuff that would potentially generate sales tax for the city and property tax? Do you want to change commercial areas to residential, knowing that we won't generate sales tax, that will generate just property tax? Like those are things to keep in mind as you're looking at those other facets of the city. And as you're doing your other meetings, while you're kind of mulling over this for a minute, can we talk about a couple of other things here really quick? So councillor Williams asked me, emailed me and asked a few questions. So there's, if you remember, we talked about this a lot and we've been talking about property tax so much that anyways, so last year we changed how we did our pay scales. Remember, we're surveying those. So we talked about this last year and we talked about it in our tentative, but now you're actually seeing it. So it looks a little different. So it is my intention and we can change how we do this, but this is how I thought was a good way to do it. And some other cities have done stuff. And so I just wanted to do it that way and then we can tweak it for what works for far west. But so we're required by state statute to put in an ordinance or in a resolution what we're paying our judge. We have not done that historically and the AOCs accepted it, but technically it should be in there. So that's why the judges is listed in here new. And depending on our caseload and stuff, depends on what we have to pay him. So that's why the AOC wants to see it. And then we have to by state statute, give the judge the average increase of all our other employees. That's a state law. And so we have increased the judge's salary by that five point eight two percent, the average increase of our, our employees.
Five point eight two.
Percent. So then I'm, I'm not the only part time employee in the city, but I'm the only part time employee that works like I do. And so historically, Ryan liked this in here because of how I work and stuff. I haven't, and I'm not whining, I'm just stating a fact. I haven't got a raise since I worked here, which is fine. It's been about three years. But so what I wanted to do with my compensation and Ryan's is look at that and do that same average increase, just the same as the judge. So we're doing those incremental changes and so that it's just holding ground.
Does this include that or not include it?
What?
Does that? Does that number include it?
This number includes it. So, but we can put this in that wage schedule if you want. If you don't want to see it in this resolution, then that's just fine. It doesn't matter. And so then we also did the same thing for the attorney, because historically we've went a long time without increasing the attorney and the treasurer. And so then we've done like big increases and it's easier for me, it's easier for budgetary. Then like if we have to replace me or Ryan, it's easier if we have more of like a market rate in there. So anyways, all of these basically I feel like we should do every year. Now, if you want to see them a different way, we can change that.
And so tell me what it means to have like two thousand, yours is per month plus adjustments set by the established payroll.
That's how, um, Ryan just listed that. I don't know what he.
You get that plus.
I do, don't. I did that amount. I think.
No, it's not like that and then some.
No, it's that, plus then like, you know, like, I think what he means by that is like benefits. Like FICA and stuff like that. He's not here tonight, but I think that's what he means. But we can just, like on the treasure, we can just move this to this, the salary schedule if you prefer for going forward. I talked to Ryan about doing that and we can just show like a, a monthly amount. Um, if you guys would rather see that, but then let me go up here. So then what some other cities have done is they've done, they've offered that same increase to the mayor and council. And then it's totally up to you guys if you take it or not. But then we're at least reviewing it every year. So I had Lindsay check, the last time the mayor and council had an increase was in two thousand sixteen. So not that that should say like, hey, we should take this tonight, but just so we're looking at it and kind of the same thing. I talked to Ogden City this week. They're giving their elected officials a four percent increase. So ours is a little bit higher than that, but they look at theirs more frequently too.
And so why, okay, I'm just confused why we, so we have attorney and justice court judge at a flat rate. And then, so then why is the recorder not a flat rate either?
Because the recorder, it's, and like this is what I talked to Ryan about a couple of years ago when we did this. Like the recorder is a regular employee, so they're on the other salary scale. So, so it's not like, and the other thing that makes it even a little more complicated is so like the attorney and me, or sorry, the judge and me are technically employees. But the attorney is like an independent contractor. And so it's even, so see like, we have to have this one on here technically by state law. But see, I feel like this one really belongs more on the salary schedule. And then this one for elected officials, it's just cleanest if you do it by ordinance or resolution. And so that's why it's in there.
Could we make an amendment to that, to, to the line of treasure, just to say, instead of twenty-one hundred dollars, blah, blah, blah plus, could we just make that the same as what's on the recorder? Compensation paid according payroll schedule?
I don't know, like I said, and Ryan apparently is sick and not going to be here tonight. And so I don't know what he was actually thinking about that, but that's fine by me. Or you can just say, hey, we want to strike this part and move this amount over to the, um, the employee pay scale.
Treasure doesn't have to be on here, right?
Right.
So it could be on the city pay scale. That makes more sense to me.
But it's my anticipation that we would bring this to you every year like this. And as part of like adopting the budget, we would bring this to you. And then probably, I mean, we, if we're going to give any of the other employees a raise, we have to give the judge one. So you can't strike this one. But I, I guess potentially you could strike mine and the attorney's and then you could do whatever you want with you guys's.
But it doesn't hurt anything to leave it either.
It doesn't hurt anything to leave it. It's just fine. Um, it's been this way in city code for a long time. Like i- it's just fine. Um, that's the only reason we're bringing it to you and anticipate seeing this every year. And then you guys, so if, if I was saying in your C, I, I really don't have a problem with this from my position. Any of these, and these are all in the budget. It would just be if you guys want to take your increase or if you don't.
And, and as we talked earlier, I don't have a vote, but I have a voice and I don't want to raise.
I don't, I mean, I, none of us got into this for the, for the money and I don't.
Yeah, it's twenty dollars.
And I totally agree, but at the same time, I want, you know, you just let it slide for years and years and years. And I want people next year running and being compensated. I mean, it's, it's a catch twenty-two. I mean, I don't, like you say, to me, twenty dollars is nothing and I don't care about it, but I also want future people. Working out for them too. So you just, that's what happens is it's ignored for years and years and years until it's so far behind that.
Right. And I mean, there's cities that pay like way more than this. There's cities that pay less than this. When we set those, I believe in two thousand sixteen, we had somebody do a study. And they kind of came back with this and showed it to the council and, and they liked it and felt comfortable with it. And so that's where those amounts were originally set from.
Part of it was actually, it was increased to cover the taxes that were taken out so that the actual check.
Right, because they got switched before state law said that elected officials couldn't be employees. But then the IRS said, came back and said, no, you've got to be employees. So then state law didn't match federal law. So then all, everybody had to switch everybody from elected being independent contractors to being employees.
Two minutes till seven. Is there anything else we want to wrap up in the work session? And does anybody need a break?
Thank you, Cody. I know you feel like you've spent a lot of time here with us, but really it, I, it's been very informative.
Pay you for.
Right, exactly.
You want to do this every year? And I'm like, yes, I want to do this every year.
Well, and, and, no, we absolutely appreciate it. And of course you get to replay the record here again.
Right, right. So I probably won't di- dive into this level. But on the property tax, just know that everything's set just to, at the certified tax rate. So if you just want to go through the normal process, not go through truth and taxation, we could just approve everything as it is. If you want to go through truth and taxation, then we need to approve a higher tax rate tonight and then we probably don't have to adopt the final budget.
Hey, thank you, Cody. Don't go too, well, yeah, we'll need that microphone. We've got one minute to stretch. I need to finish looking for that one. I thought for sure. Boy did I hear you yet.
Okay.
But yeah. Yes, he's just blaming traffic. No, he's coming from Pason. Yes, especially if we're going to approve how much we're going to pay.
Yeah.
Details. Don't go too far, Dave. Said you didn't need to. Oh, now you need a water.
Thank you. He's late. He doesn't get it anyway.
You didn't use your water? Oh, okay. Okay, is you guys ready to rock? You guys ready to rock too?
Yeah.
Okay, um, call this, uh, city council meeting to order. Um, we're going to have an opening ceremony and, um, Katie, will you please offer a pledge? And David, will you offer a prayer?
Please write. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holy Father, we're grateful for this opportunity to gather this evening and conduct the affairs of Far West City. We ask, as we do so, that we'll be open-minded and be able to, take into account all the matters that are before us. We're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy in this city and in this land. Grateful for those who fight for those. And we ask thy blessings to be with us this evening. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, David. Okay, um, we'll be going to comments and reports. So public comments, we have, uh, two minutes per person. Please share your thoughts. Not according to, about things that are not going to be in the public hearing. And if you have questions that need to be answered, we have a, we have a form so we can actually get back to you. So is there anyone that has any public comments they'd like to bring up? Anybody? Anybody? Nobody? Okay, moving on. We now have, uh, something fun, a presentation of certificates from Far West City. And the Fremont Five CTC Coalition. Oh, I've been given a talking point. To, uh, tobacco compliant businesses in Far West City. Okay, this talking point, I better change the name of the city, not reading. Okay.
Oh, yes, yeah, oh, yes, sorry. Do change the name. Go ahead. You're doing great.
Want me to read this first? Okay, on behalf of Far West City and the Fremont Five CTC Coalition, we are excited to present awards to businesses in our community who have passed tobacco compliance checks. We appreciate the effort these businesses make to keep our community safe. And, oh, I don't read that part, that's, it said Marriott Sladeville on there, that's why. Read this straight. So we're going to go give some certificates. One of the joyous things I get to do as a mayor. Cut ribbons and hand out certificates. Okay, certificate presented to Maverick. Some Maverick might come on.
My name's Sarah. Sarah, and we're the store manager. Yeah, I'm the store director.
Okay, well, this is a big thank you for your store doing the right thing.
Great, love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
You too.
I don't think there's anybody else here.
Nobody else is here? I'm going to go ahead and read them off. Seven eleven. Millers, Far West, that would be, I believe they're at sixty-six again. And Chevron, so they are also in compliance and we thank them as well. Well, that was kind of fun. Okay, uh, next item of business is a report from the planning commission. Geneva, you get to give us your report.
I feel like I should just be voted in as chair because I've really taken a lot of responsibility the last month. I'm just kidding. Okay, quick review. We had kind of a short meeting. We held, um, a work session before the meeting to review with possible, well, property owners and possible developers on the nineteen hundred piece over behind the Maverick. Um, we had the developer and the owner there. Then in the meeting, we had two public hearings. We had one for a conditional use permit for, um, warehousing, really a flex space, um, off of Higley Road. And the second one was to amend the general plan for M one in that nineteen hundred west area. We tabled both, um, action items once they came out of public hearings. On that note, we tabled the conditional use permit because there was just some miscommunication, I think, between us and staff and the applicant. And we needed to kind of all get on the same page because I think he was falling under something that would really be in his zone. So, um, that one we have to clarify. The second item regarding the amendment to the general plan on the M one, was tabled because we would like to request, um, a joint meeting with the city council to kind of, view the future of the city in that area and get everyone's input before we do something. So that's my only request. Other than that, we just did, had a couple of discussion items about general plan and the Fourth of July. But that's my only request of you guys tonight is that we maybe pin down a date for that, not to hold up the property owner and the developer. But, um, get some discussion going on that, so.
Okay, any other questions or?
Hey, go for it.
You said you talked about the Fourth of July. What did you talk about?
Well, no, I don't want any responsibilities.
Okay, that's fine. So, I want to make sure we're doing a city float again this year where the city council and the planning commission are all welcome. Just sit on the float. Lou, you're more than welcome to come, be there. Do you have the stuff you used last year? Do I need to just get new stuff?
I like to throw stuff away, so no.
Okay.
Sorry. I can, no, I, no, I was, I honestly think I left most of it. So if, if I have anything, she has it.
I'll look after.
Cause I know we brought all the, we, we brought all the signs back. We still have the banner from last year.
And they found those.
Okay, all of the hard stuff I did, the rest of it got ripped off and.
Oh, that's fine.
Fell off the back while we were coming back.
Newer that stuff, but I wanted to make sure the planning commission knew that they were more than welcome to be on the float with us, so.
Perfect. And that we, all we really talked about is having a booth there to discuss the general plan and have some input on that. And have an opportunity to see the public, so. If you need anything else, I might consider it, but.
Thanks, Geneva.
No, absolutely not. No, do you know how many people would come out for aggression on me? This guy probably will, number one? No.
I'm going to do it. There might be some for me.
Wonderful.
Okay, at least come and dunk me then.
Okay, there you go. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Geneva. We appreciate you and all, all of the commission. We appreciate you very much. Okay, uh, business items. First item is to open public hearings as advertised. One of, the first one is to consider adjustments to the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget. The second is to consider approval of the final twenty-two, twenty-three budget, including salary, wage and professional service adjustments. And the third is consider amendments to consolidate the fee schedule. This will be one public hearing with three topics. So I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we open the public hearings.
I'll second.
Okay, we have Josh and Katie on motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in a public hearing. So, I don't know, would you like to present the basics for the public? Cause some of it's going to be recorded.
So what if we do it, because technically we're in our public hearing, what if we just talk about them as we approve each of them? Is that okay? Or do you want to talk about them all now?
Well.
What would you prefer?
In case there is any public input, we could, we can do it as we're presenting them.
It's up to you.
I think you should present them during the public hearing. So people have background.
Technically, the public hearing is just so if people want to make a comment. So we don't have any public here to make a comment, but it's. I guess, so, so I can present, it's up to you, like we've fulfilled the requirement.
So I guess the question would be is, it's how you want me to present it. Do you want me to present them now?
Do you just like an opportunity to comment now or later?
But I would like to hear a brief review of the adjustments to the budget. It's hard to comment on something you have.
Right, and so, and that's fine. Um, the only changes we've made to the budget are those that were included in the packet. So there's three line items and we went through everything else during the tentative budget hearing. Um, so the changes that I have right now on the budget are the first one being I have to adjust the property tax rate to the certified tax rate as determined by the, the county. And so I have done that, so I reduced the property taxes to match that. And we also talked about doing away with the street light fee. And so I pulled the revenue associated with the street light fee. And then I, and then I think it's number eight. Number eight, if you go up to the first page.
There we go. We like pictures.
And then, um, and then I adjusted the two of those through sales tax. So since the public hearing we held on the tentative budget, that's the only three things that changed with the budget as it stands right now. So, and that was all presented with the packet.
Maybe, yeah, then I think it, it's a great idea to just touch on, yeah, the, uh, tentative budget, the salary, wage, professional service adjus- adjustments and then.
Any questions on those, Lou?
Okay, just quickly, trying to get in the streetlight, we said you're removing that.
Lou, in order to get you recorded, we need you on a microphone. You can either take a microphone or come up and speak into the mic.
My name is Lou Best, and I would like clarification on the adjustment to the streetlight fee. My understanding that it was being eliminated or changed, what does that mean exactly?
So, right now, it's a dollar fee on everyone's statement each month. The state auditor has said that fees like that are not recommended, it could get us in trouble. So, in essence, we will be eliminating that fee and just absorbing it into our general fund. So, really, it will be a dollar credit back to each resident, not a dollar credit, but a dollar eliminated from your fees each month.
That will be one less item on your Borna Vista bill.
The public intervention.
Well, the public's still paying for it, just in a different location.
You won't have that fee anymore. Okay, any more public comments about the budget or any questions you wanna ask our treasurer about the budget?
Okay, and so, right now, just to reiterate, since it's another agenda item, we have the approval of the, right now, there's the certified tax rate in the budget, and that's agenda item four D. Um, and that tax rate is decreasing as we talked about in the work session. And I believe that one's number seven. Yeah, so if you'll scroll up to the very first page. So, that tax, the certified tax rate is decreasing to point zero 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 three four nine, and that would generate three hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the city if the council decides to approve the certified tax rate. And we looked at, and we have looked at increasing that for various projects in the city, and the council was considering what they wanted to do and if they wanted to do an increase this year.
You scroll up to those potentials or?
I think it's page three. Uh, one more. Go to the bottom so you can see right there.
Right there.
So, this is my calculations. If the city held the tax rate, which is right where the cursor is, which is point zero zero four two four, it would generate about seventy-four thousand dollars of additional revenue for the city. If they went to a point zero 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 four five zero, it would generate a hundred thousand dollars of additional property tax revenue for the city. It costs residents about thirty-four dollars a year to do that, or two dollars and eighty cents a month. If they wanted to a hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue, the tax rate would be point zero 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 five five one. It would cost about sixty-seven dollars per average resident, or five dollars and sixty cents per month to do that. And then, there's a couple other options in between those amounts. So, that's the certified tax rate.
Is there any public comments about that?
Cody, could you just kind of give a little update on like the financial health of our city? Kind of what you said to us about, you know, we balanced the budget for this year, but why we were kind of looking at these adjustments?
So, the, so we have been able to budget or balance the budget this year. Um, we are pulling sales tax up, which sales tax is everybody, or most people know is largely driven upon the economy, right? Is the economy's good, sales tax is good. So, as long as the economy stays good, we should be able to, we should be able to capture at least what I have budgeted in sales tax. However, if the economy decreased, um, we would need more property tax to help offset the decrease in property tax, or sorry, sales tax. Um, the other thing to keep in mind is we are, because the economy is doing pretty well, we have collected a lot in sales tax this year, but the offset to that is we're having almost a hundred thousand dollar increase in our sheriff's office bill or assessment, whatever you wanna call it, this year from the prior year. So, that hundred thousand dollars has to be paid somewhere. Um, and right now, we generate, the top of the screen there, we generate only about a hundred and eight dollars per resident in property tax for the average residents in you, in Far West. And the average police cost, if I remember right, it's about two hundred and seventy-five dollars per call. So, if each new house in the city called the police once during the year, we'd be in the hole about a hundred and sixty-five dollars on each call. So, that's part of the reason why we're, the city's taking a lot of its unrestricted revenues to pay those increases, and that's been the case for the last ten years. And so, the amount of money the city has available to allocate to new or different projects or to roadways and things has been decreasing as we've been paying the sheriff more.
The last time we had an increase was in twenty thirteen?
The last time we had a what?
An increase in property tax for the city was twenty thirteen.
Correct. So.
Hey, um, I would like to ask you to also go over the um amendments to the consolidation fee schedule.
Before that, any comments on that, you three? Lou, you represent the city, so you better speak up.
I'm embarrassed on behalf of the public. Uh, I would think when you talk about tax increase, there would be a few more people in this room. I don't know if that's misinformation.
If, if we did vote to change that, this wouldn't be a final vote tonight. There would be a truth in taxation, public hearings, all that stuff would have to happen.
Okay.
Move into a whole nother process.
And I haven't had time to stay the figures. What does this translate to for the average citizen of Far West in terms of an increment in property tax?
Well, so that's what these numbers are. So, if you look at this right now.
Right here, Lou, if we, if we increased it by that percentage rate, or by that calculating rate, it'd be two dollars and eight cents.
Per month.
Per month, oh.
Thirty-four dollars a year.
And that's if we held the current tax rate.
But, but what you ought to understand is also look down here at the numbers below. The estimated percentage increase would be we're increasing property taxes twenty-one and a half percent. So, our property tax is low, so even a small increase makes it seem extremely high. So, if you got out here to the three hundred thousand, I mean, you're almost doubling property tax.
I guess my concern is it doesn't appear to be an excessive burden to the taxpaying public, so.
Doesn't, just any increases are no fun, right?
And that's where, like, state law and stuff's really confusing with property tax. I don't remember the percentage right off the top of my head. I wanna say that it's four percent for Far West. So, of your total property tax bill, four percent goes to Far West. So, if you have a tax bill of a thousand dollars, forty dollars would go towards Far West, and the rest of that goes to the schools, the library, Weber Fire, the mosquito abatement district, um, Central Weber Sewer District. And so, even though you're looking at and thinking like, well, my property tax bill is way more than a hundred and eight bucks, it's because it's going to all those different entities. So, um, a couple of the other items, I'll just keep going through them unless, and if you have, if the public has comment, they can make them. The only adjustment we're making to the current year budget is to increase the transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund. Part of that is because sales tax is higher than I anticipated, and so, we're just bumping up that transfer to try and stay within, stay in compliance with the state. Item F, the amendments to the consolidated fee schedule, those changes, as we discussed with the tentative budget, I proposed some fee increases. They're all just passing through increases. So, like, we have, I think it's about a twelve percent increase from Central Weber. So, I'm proposing that we increase our Central Weber monthly fee by twelve percent so that we can continue to pay those bills and that that funds still a whole, same thing with the transfer station and the garbage fund. And then, the stormwater fund, because we've had so much growth in Far West, it's just been really slow. So, we're proposing increasing that from three dollars a month to six dollars a month, and that's always in the tentative budget. And so, those are the changes in the consolidated fee schedule in addition to the, in addition to the, some of the rentals and, and things that are in there.
And I can talk to that a bit, or do we wanna?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, so, we worked really um closely with the parks committee to, there were some inconsistencies in our code between, and some holes between what we were charging for pavilion rentals and park fees. And we wanted to um make those consistent across uh the board and um also, you know, kind of update those to cover that additional wear and tear from on the, on our park facilities. So, if you scroll, I can just talk to the, um, I think most of these are, oh, right there, go back up. So, we looked at the uh senior center, just go up a little bit more. The senior center, we adjusted some policies there and then also adjusted pricing. So, the senior citizen center will rent for two hundred and fifty dollars for residents and five hundred dollars for non-resident. Biggest change there was adding the non-resident rate. Um, let me just pull up my notes.
We also got, it used to be was split between two halves of it, now you just rent the whole thing.
The old, um, the old code used to be for eight hours, the rental was for eight hours, and we've reduced that to four hours and only allowing one event per day. Um, so, then the kitchen, we um, we added, updated the rates for resident and non-resident. It went up from thirty dollars for a resident to fifty dollars for the kitchen fee. And then, the security and, the security and cleaning deposit remain the same. Um, then going to the park fees. And we've added a section um for special event fees, and this will be accompanied by um a new order, ordinance around special events. These are kind of, special events are ones that take over a whole park or facility and um, you know, those entities like baby animal days that wanna come in and use our whole facility. We didn't really have a program set up for that where, and, and even a pricing structure that um we could kind of give them some sort of um policy to abide by and certain um benchmarks that they had to meet in order for them to have our, their event here. So, um, there's an additional policy that will be coming with this, but some fees um with this are um application fee for them to be, to submit, to be heard. It, and it is refundable, it's twenty-five dollars. Standard event is anything that's under five hundred people, and it's, they, just the special event fee for that is seventy-five dollars plus whatever facility rental fees they would have. Um, and then, a large event fee would be a hundred and fifty dollars, plus again, any additional facility rent that they have. And then, standardizing our cleaning and damage deposit across the board, they would have to pay a hundred dollars cleaning and damage deposit. And then, we set out pricing, which is uniform, but spelled out facility to facility. So, with the Smith Family Park, we said um, we changed the rental rate from the, at the pavilions from twenty dot, twenty and thirty for resident, non-resident to fifty and a hundred. But that also means you have the whole day at the, with the pavilion, and we've, and we're not scheduling multiple rentals on the same day. So, that kind of eliminates, you get a longer time period at that pavilion, and you're eliminating that headache of having to go to the park and say, well, it's my time now. And um, looking at our pricing structure for field rentals, so this is for any, um, you know, soccer, um, football groups that want to come in. Um, we um are doing those at fifty dollars per hour, and then, um, a tournament is anything that they're taking that up the whole facility for the day, and that is um two hundred dollars. And then, um, added some additional pricing structure to the rodeo, rodeo arena there at Smith Family Park, so.
Can I, can I ask real quick, on the special event for this, for the rodeo, is that not covered by our special event, or is that just a duplicate?
That's the facility rent for the park. So, they, that's that charge in addition to their special event.
I was like, why do we have it twice? That, okay, got it.
I do have a question on the field rental. I know with soccer, didn't we have an agreement set up with SWAT for a certain price per game? Does this match that, or is this changing that?
It's, and it's increasing it for that group just because of some of the issues that we've come into with the past and.
Have they been notified of that, or?
Um, Mick's been giving them notice that the pricing structure is gonna change.
Okay, cuz I know, yeah.
So, the reason behind this is, is we wanted our fees to at least cover the cost of our public works time to go over and, you know, in the toilet paper and.
You know, that came up last year.
Yeah, and we also met with some folks that wanna um rant for football practices, and they're aware of it as well, so. It's a recording, Lou, unless you wanna hold the mic on your lap.
No, I understand your structure. I, it follows up on that question about a soccer rental. Let's say their soccer season starts from the last week in one month, goes through the next month, and includes the first week in the third month. Based on that, they would be charged three full months?
They would be charged depending on, on how many fields they're using and how many hours they're using them. So, if they're doing three hours of games.
It's on a per hour basis then.
Yeah.
With SWAT before, it was set up per, it wasn't set up per field, it was like per game. So, this might, depending on how the fields are set up, cuz I don't know how this works, but yeah, they paid per game fee before. Yeah, if they had, if they had like twenty games going on or ten games going on at a time, they paid per game out there. So, I don't know how the field translates to that.
So, like, at Mountain View Park, there's two fields, so, but they can fit a lot of, they can fit a lot on there.
It may be similar, cuz I think before it was like twenty dollars per game that they paid the city.
Yeah, and they can fit however many fields on that square that they can, but they rent.
And that's kinda why I was asking, so it may not be too different than what they were paying before, but it'll go up probably a little bit.
And it'll help keep, Katie's done a great job mapping out the parks. So, even though, I mean, they won't have specific lines drawn, they'll know what their half is. Do you know what I mean? Like, they can't come clear over by the playgrounds, that's not a rentable area.
We wanted to also make sure that uh, the, you know, the public that's not involved with those games and stuff still had some park to use.
So, I guess, one question I have is you do get a lot of just local teams that say, hey, we're meeting over there to play soccer for a while.
That's fine. We have that conversation with the, um, with the football people. We, like, we offered up this, this green space back here, and we said, you know, this is first come, first served, but you may get here and you may have somebody out there throwing the frisbee to their dog, and you have to kind of coexist with them.
So, this is more like if it's an official game or.
They want it reserved.
If you need to reserve these fields for Saturday at nine to noon for games, this is what you would.
Showing up to play, that's.
Yeah, it's kinda like the pavilions, you can reserve the pavilion, or if you show up and nobody's in it, and nobody's gonna be in it, and there's nobody reserving it, then you can use it.
It's just, just to guarantee that you have a field for that time.
So, this, we rolled this pricing change into this, our budgeting process. So, the pricing change will go into effect July first. But phase two of this is to um, to kind of automate our booking process for soccer, for these fields, for the pavilions. And we'll um work on adding those facilities to our sports, book, Sportsnet, I think it is, or. Um, so that January one, they'll go live, and it's, they, they're just kind of managed through that sports site. Um, so, yeah, everything across the board should be, pavilion rental is fifty dollars, from nine AM to nine PM across the board is uh fifty dollars for resident, a hundred dollars for non-resident. Um, field rentals are um fifty dollars per field per hour, and then, full day use um is two hundred and fifty dollars per field, so nine AM to nine PM. Um, that's park changes, and then, I, I think these rec center changes came from Mick, so I don't know how effectively I can speak to them, but um, just um, but there was.
I can speak a little bit to the rec center because he went over them with me. He's incre, he wants to increase and basically make it easier for them because they were like um something in fifty cents and, you know, all that exchange, and the rates had not been increased since we opened it. So, this was his recommendation of where to set them now for the rec center. In a nutshell, so a resident fifteen dollars uh, or a hundred and fifty for the year, so you get two months free. That's consistent with how we went across.
It was on like twelve something right now, so it's not a huge increase.
No, it's not. But it was something strange, like twelve dollars and fifty cents and they were getting. He wanted to make it easy, so easier. So those are the rates. Hey, any public comment about the fee schedule?
You need to come up to do that?
Needs to be recognized.
I want to thank Katie for all her work, cause this was, it took several months and a lot of input at the parks meetings, so.
Well, we have a really great parks committee that had a lot of really good input. And it was definitely a collaborative process. And I'm glad, um, that we're gonna have some consistency and moving forward.
And Public Works was huge on, and staff on input on this because a lot of this deals with, you know, how they have to deal with things.
No, great job. Thank you.
I appreciate, like I said, I don't even think we knew about the SWAT stuff till last year and they've been using our fields for years, so.
Yeah, and then we were actually, apparently, maybe I shouldn't say it on the camera, but I'm going to anyway. We had charged somebody for renting for a boutique at a rate that wasn't anywhere written down. We just made it up. And now we don't have to make it up. It's an actual set in stone, or at least written on paper amount.
Thank you.
So I would, um, entertain the closed public hearings.
One, we have, you're jumping again. We got another one. So we got item J, G.
The public hearings, we were only covering.
Okay, it's just if you want to talk about that, cause that has a budget impact.
Okay, go, go ahead, as long as we're in the public hearing. I was looking at the three items in there, we had covered those.
So the, the last one is just the amending of the exhibit A, which is included in the packet, which is the new pay scale that's included in the budget and was included in the tentative budget. And then as we talked about in the work session, also includes, um, the treasurers, the attorney, the judges pay. And we have to do the judges by statute in that ordinance. And they're just at the average increase of the employees, which was the five point eight two percent. And then we've also included that increase if the council and mayor want to take it because it's been since two thousand sixteen, since their compensation was adjusted. And that's all included in the budget, so.
Any public comments? In a nutshell, how much did it go up?
The scale? So the average was five point eight two percent. So just to recap this scale, the policy for the city now is we go out to a website that, um, all are, many of the municipalities and counties and local governments in the state of Utah report to based upon position. And so we're able to, as we participate in that, we have to report our information. We're able to pull reports based upon other entities, based upon like a job description, the city recorder. So then we can see what other entities are paying their employees so that we're consistent with other municipalities across the state. And so that's how we've come up with this scale. And so then we just look at it once a year and adjust it. And so it's, no, we don't do like a cost of living adjustment. We're just following what the market is dictating for those positions.
We just make sure that this, um, gets added to the code site just because it is referenced, exhibit A is referenced in code. And I think the public should be able to access that along with the code.
And that's great. That's not something I do, but.
So there's what eighteen steps? So any given person in a job title can go from one to eighteen and we're all over, and nobody is topped out.
Right.
And then it increases.
And those steps don't correspond to years. Um, they have to do an annual evaluation. If they don't pass their evaluation, then they don't get their step. So there's some checks and balances built into it. Um, but it just kind of takes some of that arbitrary nature out of it, so.
I personally like the multiple steps. I worked at a company where there was three steps and I sat at one for fifteen years.
Where I work, there's no steps.
No steps?
I, I don't know the steps.
Okay, is, did we hit all the items?
I think so. So that should be everything in the budget.
Hey, any more public comments about any of this budget stuff? Speak now or forever hold your peace.
You said there was across the board, five percent increase?
On average, five point eight two percent.
It was not merit, it was based on matching, matching comparable pay scales in other cities.
Correct, correct.
How does that relate to the step increase? Is that a separate entity?
No, the, so we take, we query the database and we get a min and a max. We divide it into eighteen steps and they get a step, so.
So it's.
The average step increase was five point eight two percent.
So basically everybody, every paid employee got a step increase, is that what?
As long as they pass their evaluation by their supervisor.
They won't get a step.
Okay, I, I guess that's, that's, that's the, that's the question. Is this an automatic thing or is it based on an evaluation?
It's based on evaluation.
Everybody performed well, so everybody got a step.
If you get a step, you get the chunk. If you don't get the step, you don't.
Right. Okay.
Hey, thank you, public. I will now entertain B.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Hey, Josh and Katie got it to it again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, C, approval of the adjustments to the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Any more? Cody, you want to go over anything or do we want to go for, have we had enough of Cody?
I'll make a motion, oh, sorry.
No, I was gonna.
You were gonna make it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the adjustments to the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
I'll second that.
Hey, we have Josh and Dave on motion and second. Um, let's do these roll call. So David.
Aye.
Josh.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Janelle.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. D, here's the fun one, approval of the certified tax rate. Do we want any further discussion about this or are we prepared to make a motion?
I'm not.
I'm prepared to make a motion, but I don't know how everyone else feels, so.
Any further, anyone want to bring up anything, discussion? We can discuss after the motion and, or we can just vote. I'm okay with any of the above.
I make a motion then that we approve the certified tax rate.
At?
At the current level, not to, I can't remember the terminology used.
I think it's point zero 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 three four nine. So it'd just be adopting the certified tax rate as set by the county.
Adopting the certified tax rate.
Hey, that was a motion. Dave and Josh, these guys are just all over it on, down here and all over it. So, roll call, David.
We want to have a discussion.
Okay, do we want any further discussion before we vote?
I just, I'm real, I'm really, I'm relying on you guys a lot right here because I haven't been through the, we, I haven't been through this before. And I just, and I, I'm relying on your expertise.
Well, I wouldn't rely on my expertise. Um, as I've looked at this and I've gone back and forth. I mean, I've thought about making the, you know, Luke made the comment. It's not that big of a jump, but at the same time, it's not a huge amount in our budget when you look at the overall budget. The biggest thing that swayed me is, is because of our sales tax revenue and other grants and other things that we've gotten, we have gotten significant funds. And so I kind of feel like, yes, that increase is gonna come and it might be a massive increase next year. But I feel like this year, right now, we have the funds and the money we need that we don't need to put that, I mean, additional fee on the citizens yet.
And philosophically, I have the same issues with promoting an increase when we don't really have a need to base it on. We have guesses and thoughts of what might happen, what might come. But, um, to support an increase without knowing and being able to support that or, or point to certain details that, yes, I know we have additional expenses coming up and additional projects we would like to do, but it's very possible we'll also have funds to cover those. So that's why I also just, you know, next year might be completely different.
I appreciate that. Well, that's, that's the hard part is like, the smaller increment increases seem more appealing to me. But I see this year that maybe, maybe we don't need that. But then next year, what's that increment gonna be, you know?
Yeah. No, like I say, I mean, I, and that's kind of, I thought originally about doing the smaller increment. But, you know, what was that really gain us right now and the justification? I just couldn't get there, but like I say, next year it might be a, it might be a huge increase.
Percentage wise.
Percentage wise, and I understand that. And so that's kind of why right now it's, you know, I see these funds and what we have and the sales tax revenues up. And I just feel like it's.
And I guess next year, if things aren't great, we can have those numbers and say, this is why we're doing it.
And we don't even have, correct, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead.
And, and we don't have a fully baked year for the, I call it a franchise fee. Um, but the utility fees, right? I mean, we're only four-ish months into that. And so I think we still have a lot of upside on that coming to us, so. Um, anyway, that's thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Let's continue with the vote. David.
Aye.
Josh.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Janelle.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We are not going to raise property taxes and we gave everybody a dollar back per month.
Although a lot of the other fees are going up, I mean.
Okay, do you have the other fees?
Unfortunately, but those are out of our control.
Looking at the sugar park. Okay, um, approval of the final twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Any, any comments, Cody, from you before we?
Unless you have any questions, I feel like we really went through it and.
Maybe just really quick for the public that's here, recap the, the pass through costs that we do, you know, that we are raising.
So the one thing, I think the sheriff's office is what you're talking about through the pass through, so.
And you'd said sewer.
We're talking about the sewer, those fees, it's, so those are part of the budget. So yeah, Lou, we saved you a dollar.
So the sewer is going up, I think it was twelve percent. The transfer station's going up nine percent. And then we, we doubled the stormwater fee, but it's only three dollars a month, so it's going to six dollars a month. And if you remember right, those are enterprise funds, so they're like separate entities of the city. Each fund is almost like it's a separate business and they have a profit motive. So right now, we aren't, like in the stormwater fund, we're losing money. And so to run, to be fiscally sound with our operation of that fund, we needed to double the rate. And so those funds should.
Just to mention those few that, you know, really most are pass through costs, we don't have.
So when the transfer station charges us more, we just pass that on to the residents.
You're welcome to come up. Lou, you can also just take the mic back to your seat.
Chair here, but it's too low. I, I appreciate the fact that property tax doesn't amount to much. But even though these cost more, you provide a, a convincing argument why we have to spend the money. You didn't in the case of the property tax. So although costs are gonna go up, at least these, you've got reasons why we, we basically, uh, you know, law enforcement, we don't have a choice, sewer costs, we, we just don't have a choice, you know? So I think the public will understand that, so.
Well, and typically, that's the way it works. I mean, when they come, you know, the sewer district comes to us and says, this is how much it costs, we just.
Everyone pays.
We have to pay the bill, right?
We don't make any money, we just pass the, the cost straight on to the citizens, so.
Yeah, we have to pay it regardless, so we don't get to even.
So that, that was everything I wanted to just kind of clarify. And so I'm ready to make a motion.
Hey, I will, um, let you make that motion or anyone else who wants to make a motion, if you're fast enough.
Make a motion to approve the final twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget.
I'll second that one. Oh, I got you. I got you that time.
Okay, we have David and Janelle on the motion and the second. Uh, roll call, vote. David?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimously passed. Uh, the next one, approval of resolution number twenty-two oh two amendments to the consolidated fee schedule. Any more discussion before?
I move we.
Or we can make a motion, yes.
I was gonna let Katie make it.
I move we approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero two to amend the consolidated fee schedule.
I'll second that, yeah.
Oh dang it. I feel somewhat, somewhat, um, involved in this one, but.
No, go ahead.
Doesn't matter who.
I'll second if David doesn't want to.
Janelle seconded that one.
I kind of heard a tie, but she's a little closer, so the speed of sound. Katie and Janelle were the motion and the second on this one. All in favor, David?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
Unanimous approval. The next one, approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh nine, amending the treasurer, attorney and judges pay. There's more to it than just that. It was the whole pay thing, right?
But could I just start out by saying, commenting on this? I mean, I, um, obviously it's, it's more funds that we're utilizing. But at the same time, it, uh, we need to stay competitive, um, with pay scales. And in this case especially, I think, you know, we want to make sure that, uh, in the event that, uh, we want to pay the people we have fairly currently, but we also want to be competitive when and if that ever changes. So I just wanted to state that before Cody commented.
Any comments?
So you can approve the whole thing as it stands. You could, if we approve the, everybody else's raise, you have to at least approve the judges. You could strike you guys' so you can do par, all, whatever you guys see fit.
I would like to make a motion to amend. And with that amendment, I would like to propose and, um, that we keep the mayor and city council members payment as currently set in statute. Um, and then amend the treasurer's pay to just remove that adjust, plus adjustments set by the established payroll. That makes, that makes me, I just, I'm all for continuity. And so if it is just two thousand plus, you know, just that two thousand, let's just keep it at that.
Unless you saw a reason that it needed to be there.
I don't see any reason. I mean, if you wanted to clarify, you could add like that plus applicable benefits or something like that.
And I didn't interpret it that way, Cody. I really thought it was more, um, based around the fact that it's just trying to refer to the comp schedule, not really the fringe, the other benefits. So I, I agree with Katie. I think we should just strike it and it is, it's, it's clear.
And I really don't worry about it. If we look at this every year and we do these adjustments every year, then I don't think it's a problem. And I think it's cleaner if we adopt, like we adjust this ordinance every time, like my compensation's changed, your compensation's changed. It's just way cleaner with state code.
And I, I agree. I like having that, that number right there instead of, oh, well, reference the payroll schedule. It's, um, it's more, um, it's clearer, it's more transparent and.
So I'll second that motion from Katie.
Okay, so the motion was to adjust this, that was your motion, David has seconded.
Adjust for everyone except for elected, right?
Right, so the elected will stay.
Yep.
As it is now. And so that was a Katie and David motion second. Uh, roll call, vote, David?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, H, discussion, fraud risk assessment from the office of the state auditor.
Okay, so those who have been on the council probably remember this. This came about a couple of years ago. The state auditor's office feels like if we fill out this fraud risk assessment and we get a perfect score, we won't have any fraud in the city, is kind of what they're saying. Or our fraud will be greatly reduced. Now, in practice, some of these things, you guys have tons that you're doing. So to go ahead and like throw an audit committee assignment on there too, does it really provide enough value that it's worth getting twenty more points on this? Some of those things, we can explore. Um, since I started, we were gonna work on a few of these things and then it's been COVID and it's just been hard to meet. There's a couple of these that we may try and pick up five points here, five points there by implementing like a conflict of interest policy that everybody'd have to disclose each year, a couple of those little things. But it's just required by state law that we bring this to you each year, so you can see where we score. And then in our financial report, whatever our score is in that tier, that gets reflected in the report from our independent auditor. So.
Every year anyway.
Right. So it will just say, um, if you look at that, it'll say that, you know, we're, I can't remember the terminology right off the top of my head, but it'll say like, we're very secure or we're semi or anyways. So we just have to tell you guys about it, let you see it, so you know where we're at, so.
I just had a question. Okay, so on one of them, it said MC and then it said, and then it referenced below mitigating control. What does that mean?
So in accounting, so like, um, let me give you an example. So like separating, so usually one control is separation of duties, right? So we wouldn't want like Lindsay to take payments and to do the bank reconciliation cause then potentially she could like do a non-cash adjustment. because then potentially she could like do a non-cash adjustment, so she could say Dave, so say Dave came in and paid his bill and he paid in cash. So Lindsay could do an adjustment and say, write off the balance of his account and then put that money in her pocket. And then when it got, it came time to do the bank reconciliation, she wouldn't necessarily like, nobody would review that. And so a mitigating control would be, let's say that Ken has to review all of the non-cash adjustments. So he would see that Dave had a non-cash adjustment, and if there wasn't a reason for that, then he, he should go ask Lindsay and say, hey, why are we adjusting this? Like, what, why? Why are we adjusting off Dave's bill? So that's what, so mitigating control would be the step that, that Ken performs. And so that, I can't remember exactly which one that is, but we have a control like that and pay. Because I, so I don't have access to the credit cards and I do the bank rec each month, so I see those, but I don't have any access to that, so I should in theory hopefully be able to find something there.
Thank you.
So, so this is just an item we have to tell you about, show you, and then we turn it into the state auditor's office and our auditors look at it, so.
So is this discussion really the question, do we want to do more to get that hundred percent? Or are we okay just staying where we're at?
So I feel like right now we're okay staying where we're at, you know, like some entity, the audit, the state auditor's idea behind this is like, oh, you know, like cities will see, hey, we can get twenty more points and spend fifty grand to have somebody else come in and review our books. And it's like, okay, well, is it worth twenty points for fifty grand? And, and so I feel fairly comfortable where we're at. Obviously, the bigger the staff, the more separation of duties and the better controls we're gonna have, but I don't really feel like there's justification to hire a bunch more people just to get better controls at this point, you know, if we were having a lot of problems or something, then maybe there would be.
I agree, and.
Essentially, it's being checked again when we have that independent audit.
Right, and see like all this stuff, like if you look at every one of these, this is where I have like a gripe with this, is if you look at every one of these, like almost every one of these questions, somebody's done something stupid in the state and the state auditor's office has got mad at them, and then they're making, uh, everybody in the state comply to that same rule.
They're just gonna check that one thing that one guy did once.
And not all of it's that way, you know, like some of it's if you have a degree, then you get points, or if you have a certification, so I'm a CPA, so we get twenty points or ten points because I'm a CPA, um, so some of it's not that, but some of it is the other. So, so I feel, yeah, yeah, so I feel comfortable with where we're at and don't feel like we, a couple of the low hanging fruits, we might work on in the next couple of years, but the rest of it, I'm okay with where we're at.
I agree.
I know that like, you know, uh, when I'm in my office, I get these different stacks of things I need to sign. And Lindsay's payroll, Andrea's, um, accounts payable, so that's the separation, they don't cross the lines there, so.
I agree. I think, uh, we'll, we're doing well, we'll continue to monitor the report that we, annual report that we get, just for anything they do correct or catch that they, fills a red flag, but I don't think it's worth spending any more money on it.
So, um, that was the discussion. Is there any more discussion by the council on this? Okay, thank you Cody for everything that you've, uh, firehosed us with, we appreciate every moment of it. Because it's all good data, you keep us straight, you keep us square and you keep the budget balanced and that's huge.
Have you ever had so many agenda items before?
Last two hours.
No, like it's lots of fun, right?
At least once a year.
Right.
Times.
Right, that's why I don't come to very many city council meetings, because you wouldn't invite me back, right?
At least you don't have to do truth and taxation too. I mean, it could be worse.
We really appreciate.
For that twenty-one hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you Cody. So moving to consent items. Uh, first one is approval of far west public meetings rules of order and procedures. So a little back history on this, it's actually in our code that we, um, the planning commission must, is to adopt these meeting rules of order and procedures. I asked Ted quite some time ago if he would actually, um, bring this to the planning commission to do so, and they've done that, and, um, it's been written in a, in a way that I would also, when we do this, we would also adopt these as our rules of order and procedure. And according to the state code, this is something we usually just have out there on the desk, so that as people come in, they're aware of how we're going to conduct the meeting. So that's what that is, so I will entertain a motion on the approval of the far west public meetings rules and order of procedures.
I'll make a motion that we approve the far west public meeting rules and of order and procedures.
I'll second.
Okay, we have David and Josh. Again, is there any further discussion or questions on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. So the next one, approval of minutes dated June second, twenty-twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve the minutes dated June second, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second.
Okay, Janelle and Katie are the motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Motion, approval of bills dated June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
I move we pay the bills.
Katie?
Second.
I heard Janelle actually slightly before you. So Katie and Janelle are the motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, one of our favorite ones is canceling the July seventh, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting.
I move we cancel the July seventh, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting.
I'll second.
Katie and Josh are the motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously, canceled unanimously. Um, review of the administratively approved business licenses, this is when we can ask questions about these. And if we want to, we can have them come in if that's what we choose to do, or we can just review them. But this is our time to talk about that.
I had a few issues, uh, and questions on these. Um, I, and I'm, I apologize in advance. Um, okay, so Pony, Ponies Customs, um, this is the body shop that's at thirty-three ninety-four North Two Thousand West. Looking at the zoning in this area, it's currently zoned M-one, which would need a conditional use to do automotive repair and body repair in that location. Can I, before we approve these, can I have access to that conditional use?
Yeah, I, and you're welcome to call it in.
Yes.
That, it does the condition uses for property, not the business.
Okay, I'm like, but I'd like, so I'd like to say, see that, but I also have concern that this business has been operating without a business license since April and now they're, which is in violation of code. And I have, I take issue with that, so I, I mean, for that reason, I'd like them to come in and speak with us. There, I looked up their business entity on the state website and their business entity has been registered with the state since April. And driving past there every day on my way home, there's work going on there.
So just to help within the questions on this, Lou, do you mind coming up to the mic and answering questions? Okay, I remember you making motions on this conditional use.
Basically, as I remember, it was similar to what was already there, is that correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
So we didn't see anything, any red flags or anything that would alarm us. Now, we don't, we're not in the business license loop, so we don't know anything about that, but it didn't seem.
There were conditions that you put on that.
Yeah.
And I think.
Would, it related, as I recall, you can help me, they did painting in one of the rooms, wasn't it? And we had to make sure that there wasn't any volatiles and that sort of thing could cause problems, but it's been a while, I, I.
And I think it would be good, because like usually, so if they're purchasing that property, how do they, as a business owner, is it up to like in the seller agreement for them to disclose that?
I, I think it's a healthy thing for the city council to review conditional uses when you are evaluating business permits.
And, and make sure they're, they're.
They're aware of them.
Right, if they don't even know.
Yeah, yeah, they, their painting booth, I remember this well, their painting booth is all separate, it's not, it's all filtered and everything, it's all separate. And the reason we approved it is simply because it's in the food areas for that. And we have it and we put it in the, it's the use, but there was also agreements that they had to modify the place and then what that was done.
The previous.
Yeah.
Business person did.
Right, but I don't know, I didn't, I didn't know it was changed yet, so I.
And I think there is somewhere in code related to conditional use, that if a new occupant or business takes that site, that they need to provide a site plan with that and.
They're modifying it, right?
I.
Is, is.
Okay, it says, the proposed business or existing business is located, this is licensed under license required, is located in an existing building, the business license or relocation of business will not be approved until site plan is, approval is granted by the planning commission and city council.
If you're not changing the site plan.
Right, my, I'm interested though, uh, you know, a, a business entity comes in, we review the site plan, that was done. The ownership changes, as, as has been explained, the site plan stays in place. My question is, do you have a clear-cut mechanism for that new business entity to know about this, the conditional use? Because we've gotten trouble in the past there. Okay, as part of their business application. Okay, so if they come in for a business application, they get in, put in their hand the conditional use. So where it falls apart is if they don't come in for a business license then.
They have done, that's what they're submitting for.
They agree, the previous businesses agreed to keep most of the vehicles behind and out of sight, and that's not the case that I see right now.
May be worthwhile to have the conversation to ensure that they comply with the conditional use, so they won't get another SBMT.
So the problem is this new, new owner is not applied for business license and therefore is not bound to.
No, they have applied for business.
They have, that's, that's. They have and but.
But whether that, whether or not they read it, we would, I, I think we should.
I think they need to be aware. Yeah.
I would like to see them come into a meeting.
So that they understand and comply with the conditional uses.
So that's, that's.
I don't know if, I mean, in my opinion, the only reason you request a site plan is if the site plan changed. The city would, could come back, if it's already been approved, we would have a hard time rejecting you at this point.
And I think the bigger issue for me is the conditional use. I want them, I want to have clear communication that this is the, the use, the conditional use of the property and that you are going to have to abide by those to, to operate on that piece of property.
And as of right now, they do have their business license, right?
No, oh, they do?
Yeah, so then we've changed this, we're just reviewing what's been approved, so we're aware, so if there are questions, we can ask them to come in and we can just say, we wanted you to come in, so we can make you aware. Because they are in compliance with everything, their business license was approved, so we're not necessarily approving or reviewing, but that's why we do the review. Is so that if there are questions and concerns, we can ask them to come in and we can just talk to them.
Okay, wonderful. I think that would, um, that would address a lot of my concerns about this one.
Is there another one you want?
Oh yeah, I'll keep going. Okay, uh, Lorraine Tenant, Lorraine Sweet Treats, um, she's operating, she has applied for a business license, a traditional business license and not an in-home business license. Um, not a resident, she's, this is a application for business license, not an application for residential business. The address that she's provided on this is currently zoned R-one fifteen and I would assume if it is not a residential business, that would also need a conditional use.
Um, so I talked with Lindsay about this and hopefully this will answer your question. What this is, is a food truck she's gonna have parked in your driveway. And you don't, I, that's not a conditional.
The business isn't there, she's, it's, but because it's not a residence and it's a food truck, that's why she's the way it is.
Do we need to just connect with her and just let her know about this part? That the ordinance requirements for the residential businesses?
Well, if she's marked all that, then she's indicated she understands.
She didn't, she filled out a standard business license.
The one you held up had it all marked.
Okay, so this will be accompanied by a residence, which will supersede this one. Okay, wonderful. That answers question sir. Last one, um, Hurricane Marine Construction located at thirty-one fifty-nine North Higley Road. Um, from the description of the business, it's a, a marine services contractor and providing construction services and, um, and they also filled out an application for a traditional business license. This address is zoned A-one, so same question, should it, should they have a conditional use? That can, it just concerns me because I'm just worried that, that it becomes like a staging yard or a, an, like a center of operation for a contractor business, which can have a fairly large footprint and is incompatible with residential zoning. I understand the logic behind like, hey, I'm just like, I just wanna be a licensed contractor so I can general my own stuff, but.
So in those one, because we've had that before, I guess clarify. Oh yeah, but I mean, we've run into this issue before, we had one, he was staging his backyard, had trucks, I mean, the whole works and we had to.
We, we could have him come in and discuss this with us so that we're clear on what the.
Because I thought those were residential, I guess I was confused on how those ones were set up.
I'm the accountant, so like this is like getting advice from your mechanic about your body, right? But keep that in mind, but I, I believe you guys under the new regulation, like how you change business licensing, you're the appeal board. So I would, isn't that correct, Lindsay? I believe that's correct from what I remember, so if it was me, I would want to stay a little more back from these issues rather than calling these people in, so what I think you should do is have Ryan send these people certified letters and say, hey, here's the conditional use permit, by the way, you should follow this, if you don't, you're gonna be called in before the city council. And same thing like with this one, like you could really have Ryan send them a certified letter saying, keep in mind that you cannot impact, like Boyd always gives this speech, you cannot change the, the character and nature of your neighborhood. And all you'd have to do is have him send you that letter, and then if it's a problem, then you could pull them in and then you are compromising your appeal authority, because I believe that's how the new regulations set up.
Yeah, I like, I like that suggestion.
I mean, because really, we just want to make sure they're compliant, so if we send them that information or, you know.
When we first set up this administratively approved business licenses, we were targeting mostly the residential businesses. We have a really good checklist for that. We also thought that would also make sense for things that are like in doctors offices and those types of things. But we also said that we probably wanted them to come in if it were other types of things that they may have questions on.
Yeah, and that's why we have the review and they go out our pack and so we see those.
Yep.
And I would, I would feel more comfortable with this marine construction if they had, if they had submitted a residential business license.
Or do we need to come up with a checklist for some of these that they are more administratively?
Yeah, I guess, you know, before we call them in, I guess that's the.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the, that's on the.
There is a checklist?
It's not in your league, but I have it on file.
Oh.
They did fill out the residential.
Yeah, so they do have all the checks.
Okay.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, well, you just should have started with. Okay, well, you just should have started with that.
That's on the drive. It's, that's on the drive.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I just looked at it.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So I guess on the other one, I, I agree, I think Cody, like you say, if they've gotten a copy of the CUP and I understand your logic behind it, um.
But I would prefer that Brian did send them.
Yeah, but I think if Ryan just notified them, making sure, for those special ones, I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea. They can't say they didn't know, right?
And, and one thing that, so I'm gonna bring this up, one thing I, I, I'm not really worried about, but one thing I, that's good for clarifying with some of these businesses is they need to adhere by the code. And this one particularly, um, if you look at their signs, they're nowhere near code. At all, I mean, the whole front is painted.
Oh, your phone customs or?
But that's also why we were going this route of having a code enforcement officer, not having the city council do this is so that if there are those, they go out, they notify, they walk through the business with them, so I mean that.
But to get a business license, they should go through and make sure they're compliant before they get the license.
But what I'm saying is, is that's why it should be independent from the city council, we shouldn't be the ones trying to enforce the code. We're the appeal authority, but if there are questions, someone might need to go out and visit their business and just walk through those things with them, not necessarily come in here and have the city councils, they just follow the code, so.
I guess I would, I would push back saying that if they're coming in, they need to adhere by the, um, site plan and they've changed the site plan.
Well, they have, I mean, but like I say, most people just need to be educated.
Yes.
And that's what we learned from that code enforcement, she said, most of the time it's just going there to their business or whatever, educating them on what the code says, so.
Could that be done before the business license is approved? Would that simplify?
Historically, that's what we have done.
And let me just make one more comment, you know how we talked about sales tax earlier? Like, if we're trying to be business friendly, like if you think about how many businesses are operating at eight o'clock on a weekday night that like the person who's really making these decisions could come into city council, like it's probably gonna be burdensome for a lot of these people to come to city council. So personally is what I think, so the more that we can have staff do it, whether it's Ryan or Lindsay, I think the more business friendly the city is. But that's just my two cents.
Good comments.
Okay, so on the review of the administratively approved business licenses, um, do we want to ask them to come in or are we gonna go with that other thing, this isn't a voting thing, we can just kind of.
I think we do with the other. I think we have Ryan or someone send them a letter outlining the requirements and like I say, if they are changing the site plan and, you know, let them know that they need to come in for approval of a new site plan or I think sending that to them would be beneficial as a first step.
I'll send my notes to Ryan.
Okay. Okay, that was our review.
And all the other ones we resolved, right?
Um.
As we, we determined they'd filled out the residential stuff.
Yes, that took care of that one, other one I wasn't concerned with, and then she's submitting a residential one, so yes.
Okay, um, Mayor Council follow-up, report on assignments, David.
So I've been gone just a little bit, Mayor, so, uh, really just need to follow up with you and, and work on our schedules for the mayor at Sladeville meeting that we could not have. Um, other than that, uh, I don't have anything else I can think of.
Okay, Josh, what have you got?
Um, I'm still calling Lindsay, I think every day on Freedom Festival stuff. And we will be wrapped up with that on July fifth, so. But I think everything's coming together, um, we're, like I say, it'll be up until the day it's done, but uh, my sewer board meeting is Monday night, so we'll be having that, um, I think that's all I've got right now.
Okay, Katie will be right back, Janelle, would you like to take a moment?
Um, yeah, we had a park meeting Wednesday, yesterday, was that just yesterday? It seems like a long time ago, um, so like I say, thank Katie again for getting that fee schedule put together, I know that was a lot of work, um, and then I still owe Ryan, uh, nope. I just have one revision to make on the park adoption. And then we should be ready, um, and then I also attended the senior dinner yesterday. And I'm sorry, I didn't go to the first one because that was a joy to go to, and I'm sorry, I had to leave early, but, and thank you to Chris for her the great job, she's obviously done over there.
Before the music, right?
I've got some of the music. And I got to talk to Chris before, so. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, and Katie came back just in time for her assignments.
Um, uh, Communities That Care Coalition. Um, we are having a launch of the Know Your Script campaign on June thirtieth at, oh, I don't know the time.
I think it was five or six.
And well, it'll be, um, inviting members from the community to come and learn about the campaign. We'll be inviting media as well, this is at Smith Family Park, seven o'clock, uh, Thursday, June thirtieth. Um, at the pavilion that's closest to the, uh, the pond. So any community members and council members are welcome to, to join us there, I think they may have you say a few words, Mayor. Um.
What time was that at, Katie?
Seven o'clock on Thursday thirtieth, I'll send it.
The softball game starts at eight thirty, just to be aware of that.
Yes.
What softball game, do I know about that?
Part of the Freedom Festival celebration, yep.
What? It's all on the website.
Um, so yeah, it's only seven to eight, so, but thank you for the reminder, cause I had totally spaced out, um. So that's Communities That Care, um. Uh, like we talked about the fee structure and the special events ordinance, um, Ryan is working on the code update for the special events policy that we've been working on for the parks committee and, um. I think that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Katie.
Senior Center, Center Dinner, it was great.
Yeah, and Katie had this awesome idea to, cause she's like, are we doing something for Chris, and I'm like, well, usually we do a plaque or something at Christmas. Katie brought her flowers and we were able to present her flowers last night. That was pretty special for her, I think we almost teared her up. Pretty strong. Okay, um, I'm not gonna go in, believe it or not, not too into debt and there won't be one more thing except for maybe something. So, uh, first thing was, I, I did, and I, I sent out something to the council, but so the public knows, I did sign a letter of intent with Pleasant View for, uh, WACOG money for some roads that have to do with the area in, um, conjunction with Pleasant View over there off of twenty-seven hundred, so in order to get streets and traffic through that area so that we can, uh, do what we want to in that area. Pleasant View has been very good in, uh, reaching out and talking to us about these things, we've talked about some of it with them, so. Um, we still have, we still have the actual application to do, but we did the letter, we had to do the letter of intent before WACOG uh, on Monday, so we took care of that.
Question, I noticed they've been, I don't know if they're putting in foundations for, um, street light or traffic lights, what are they doing in that intersection?
So, yes, at the intersection, I'll, I'll call it the Jimmy John's intersection, cause I think everybody knows where that is. I'm gonna say, yes, they are wiring that for a light, that's why they built that intersection and it sure looks like that's.
Is that the intent to put it in right now?
It sure looks that way. Well, at least the wiring, maybe you.
I've been told that it was going to be somewhere down the road though, so I'm surprised that they're working anymore on it this year, but.
I just didn't think they would spend the money to put it in if they weren't gonna install the whole thing, but.
I know.
Maybe they got some infrastructure money and they decided, or maybe the demand suddenly came up where it's like, we're gonna need to put a light in. I don't know, but they're obviously doing something there to get prepared for a light. So, that's that. So, um, WACOG was, I finally got to go to WACOG. Um, there wasn't a lot of action items, but there were a lot of presentations, so one of the things is uh, Hill Air Force Base always has an update, they're getting a new change of command of the twenty-second. So they're getting a new commander at Hill Air Force Base, just in time for their June twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, I think everybody knows about the Giant Air Show. They're projecting over seven hundred thousand people to attend.
I'm not going.
And once again, they're recommending that if you're gonna do it, uh, take public transit and if you go to the Clearfield Railroad Station, you know, the front runner station, free shuttles ride on in, you don't have to worry about parking, so that's what they're recommending on that. Um, they also introduced, so there's a lot of change of directors and whatnot, so Tina Matthew, I think I'm pronouncing that correct, is, is the Weber Area Dispatch nine-one-one and Emergency Services District Executive Director, that is now going to be a gentleman whose name is Kevin Rose. So they have a new director there, um, the Weber County Transfer Station, um, they have a guy that's currently director, John Watson, not the John Watson we know, a guy named John Watson, uh, he's been doing that for quite some time, that's now going to be Robert Slade is the new director at the Weber County Transfer Station. We then had quite a long discussion, actually the, this happened before the rest of these things. We had, um, visitors from the League of Cities and Towns, we had, um, Cameron Deal, Mayor Don Ramsey and Andrew Druber from, uh, Washington Front Regional Council. Just before the WACOG meeting, there was a Housing and Affordability Subcommittee up, meeting that they had had, and they gave us an update. So there was a lot of discussion about, of course, once again, uh, housing, housing, housing and the criticality of what we need to do about housing and the communications of it, and I, they wanted input from, um, the, uh, COG members and I piped up and said, I would love help in the communication in helping our residents understand how we can build more housing and yet we're asking everybody to reduce water. The communication of that is difficult, they didn't really have a really good answer on that. There were others that said, maybe we need to quit building everything in the Washington Front and why can't we build things out in Duchesne County and, you know, other counties that are less populated? And they said that there are no jobs there, that's why people all move here, and I go, well, you can put jobs in the middle of nowhere, but that doesn't mean they'll live there. I've been working out at Promontory for forty years and there's no houses, so, so much for that theory, they kinda gave me a funny look. Uh, it's just a, you don't just move jobs there and that's where the houses go. Right, Lyle? You know a little bit about that area out there. So, and that, so that was WACOG. Um, once again, I wanna emphasize the mayor dunk tank, bad for all the volunteers. Uh, one thing we, we're gonna do with the, um, Freedom Festival is, uh, help ensure by where we're putting things, we're making sure we have, uh, most of the parking spots available for people to park and not be putting like food trucks in there. They did have that meeting with Manny to make sure that we've got that all laid out. And, um, I think we also need to communicate some traffic flow for after, so that like as people are leaving the fireworks that we're gonna recommend all right turns if possible and get the sheriffs on board with that as well. And of course, I want, we're gonna ask everybody, like after the fireworks, just be patient. Maybe not leave all at once. If that's even possible.
Stay the night.
Stay the night, well, no, that's, just chill for a while. Just be patient, okay, and kind of along the lines of what, uh, Geneva was talking about, I have this down as something I wanted to talk about, I want, I would love for us to have, and I think they proposed, and we have also talked about having a joint work session with the planning commission. Um, so on two items, actually, so we wanna talk about the general plan with the M1 usage and all those kinds of things. Point at these maps and have some more discussion, as well as I, we wanna talk about those moderate income housing strategies. So we kind of picked out three to five that were at the top of the list, but we need to solidify what those are so that the planning commission can go forth in the general plan and affirm the direction from the city council. And I'm sure you guys would appreciate that, knowing, um, exactly what it is. So, the direction that we're going, yes, Lyle?
That's what he just talked about, well, I would propose.
Yes, my proposed date, so, um, I would like some input on this, this isn't something to vote on. I would actually like to not do it just before a planning commission or city council meeting because that doesn't always give us an, you know, sometimes we're too time constrained, I'd like us to be able to have the discussion we need to have.
What's your proposed date, Mayor?
June twenty-second, from six to eight.
I can't make it.
That's tricky on me, but I can.
That would be next Wednesday.
Uh, it's not the best date for me either.
I'm gonna be out of town.
You're gonna be out of town, not the best date for you?
I already have something from six to eight.
So do I, I mean, I, well, I also have something from sixteen.
You have something from six to eight on the twenty-seventh?
Not that I couldn't get out of it, but yes, I have something scheduled, but.
That would be on a Wednesday, is there another date really close to that, would it, Tuesday?
Tuesday, let me look.
Twenty-first.
You still gonna be gone?
I could do Tuesday.
That works for me.
A great night for me.
Come on, Josh.
Next week's not a good night at all, I have sewer board meetings.
Well, I'm gone Wednesday through Sunday and then, like I say, Monday and Tuesday nights, I have sewer board meetings and other meetings, so I'm, like I say, next week doesn't work for me, but.
Okay, I, I was, I was looking at it early so that we didn't start colliding with, you know, planning commissions, uh, urgency. Please, microphone helps.
Both those nights. You may not have been following our meetings, but the, the owner and people, we've had already two meetings, two discussions of this and planning commission meeting. We've had it on our agenda twice, we've tabled it twice. Uh, I think we oughta raise it at a pretty high level of urgency because they're gonna have to go through the whole process again, and we felt we wanted to have some semblance of a consensus between the city council and the planning commission before they come into us the third time, and so the sooner the better, please.
I mean, the twentieth, my sewer board meeting's at five thirty, realistically, I mean, by seven thirty I'd be done, but you guys could start and I could come towards the end, but.
What night is that?
Oh, Monday's a holiday, nevermind.
Some people.
I wish I got a paid holiday.
But, uh, no, Monday doesn't work for me at all. On that one, so.
You say Boyd can't do the Tuesday or Wednesday, so Boyd's out Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay, with the following week, so that does skip a planning commission meeting, but that goes into the week just before the Freedom Festival. I guess that would at least feed into their, uh, or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, if any of those.
Twenty-seven, twenty, is that what you're looking at?
No, I'm, I'm gone from twenty-seventh until the sixth.
When is Mr. Chuck gonna land back on?
Um, so before those dates would be better for me.
Before those dates, but we also just eliminated all those dates.
I know, I'm just saying.
Okay, we could try for, um.
Again, that's, I, I know what you're saying with your preference, but what about the twenty-third?
Be, what, before the planning commission meeting?
I can't make it, but if most of you guys can. At least to talk about the M1 stuff and get that started.
Can we meet at like, instead of at six, at like five thirty-five?
We, we could also, very, well.
Would Boyd do that, night, the twenty-third? No, I, and I understand, Lou, what you're talking.
I understand your reasoning for putting both things on the agenda, that makes for a long meeting. It concerns me that we're gonna try to cram all of that. Based on our dialogue in the planning commission on this and two meetings and including the work session, and we had to table it after both of those. Uh, this is a very, it's not just, uh, changing that, well, it, we're, we're, we're talking about our philosophy about what that property is gonna be used for in the future, and it's one of the few commercial properties left in Far West, so it, it's not a.
Yeah, I agree, I don't think.
It's not a small issue, and I wanna make sure we've, we've got our ducks lined up before they come into us again and we can say, okay, this is our vision for Far West. This is our vision for Far West, because we're being pushed pretty strongly by the developer. And he's, he's giving a compelling argument that I've been trying to, trying to sell this property for ten or fifteen years. And it's been unsuccessful, and this is, in my view, the only option. Um, and it's not necessarily consistent with the vision that a lot of us have had for that property, so. I I think we need to, if necessary, isolate that as the only item on the agenda until we've. Until we as a planning commission can go back to the developer and say, this is what we feel we want for that property. For Far West. And we want to make sure we're thinking in similar veins with the City Council, so.
We we can do that. Do you want to do it? Should we do it before or should we do it after planning commission?
Well, I think they want to do it before, right?
Look, to me, and I'm not, I'm not the chair, the vice chair, anything else. I have no authority other than I've been bothering this.
You're an active member with an opinion that we appreciate.
Well, tonight I've exercised that in excess. It's urgent enough that if we had to rearrange our schedule in the Planning Commission. And do this even after, have an abbreviated agenda. And then tack it on at the end at seven thirty or whatever. Um, I I would see that as a more favorable option rather than postponing this into the back end of July or perish the thought August, so. Uh, I I think we're gonna reach a point where some members are gonna have to voice their opinion to a colleague on the City Council. If necessary, or put their thoughts down in writing, because. The likelihood of us getting every single person in the City Council and the Planning Commission present at the same place at the same time. That's just not gonna happen. Okay?
Oh, we could, we can, uh, put that, but together we'll either before or after planning commission, so.
The twenty-third worked for everyone else.
Or even like you mentioned the twenty-first, I mean, that doesn't work for Josh, but neither does.
Well, it didn't work for Boyd either.
Oh, oh, yeah, you're right. It didn't work for Boyd either. Yeah.
Yeah, you said the twenty-third.
Yeah, the twenty-third is, works for me. The twenty-first, I'm trying to remember. Yeah, that works for me.
Which one's twenty-first? Tuesday?
That's the Tuesday, but.
Boyd was out.
Yeah, Boyd is out.
But he was out for that, so Thursday seems like most common right now.
Okay, somebody's not gonna be able to make it.
I can't make it, but it sounds like everyone else so far can.
Okay, um, but we'll like your opinions on this regardless.
And if I could just request one that we, once we nail it down, get a, an invite for it. But then if we could, just so I make sure it makes it on my calendar. Second is, uh. What else do we have? What documentation do we have? What submittals do we have so that we can review that as soon as possible?
We had some documentation and they gave us some additional information in our last meeting. They assured us that they would provide a full packet and they would be here present to explain things, but.
We need it beforehand.
Didn't they say they were gonna email it to Ted?
Packet and it shows the schematic where they were proposing their warehouses would be and the traffic pattern for the roads and all that.
They were gonna email that to Ted?
Well, I I never, I never, he said he was gonna get it to us. I don't know.
They could email it, then we could look at it.
Well, and I think that ought to, uh, we ought to communicate back to them.
Whether that's gonna, planning on being on this planning commission agenda or we.
No, well, Ted hasn't been present in a meeting, a couple of our meetings lately. And I don't know what the agenda is until I look at it. Maybe you know, does he, what's he got on the agenda?
He'll decide tomorrow probably.
Well, we left it tabled pending a meeting, a joint meeting.
Well, that's up to Ted not to lose.
Made that mistake before. In fact, let's not put it a third time because they're wondering if we're flakes and we look pretty.
Hold it until we have our meeting. And if we do it on Tuesday, Thursday.
And if if we have, if, as far as agenda, if we have that work session, joint work session. Earlier than at the planning commission meeting, please don't put it on our agenda for a decision until we've discussed it. Okay? Okay, very good.
Yeah, whatever information we can get as soon as possible to review.
A lot of it sounds like just what, I mean, aside from what they're gonna show us, the big question is. Do we want to change the general plan?
Well, it's, 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 you know, M1 can accommodate everything in C2, you know that, but it also accommodates a lot of other things.
And that's why I want to kind of know from them, are they expecting to do mixed use or are they just talking a hundred percent warehouse?
Well, and and I want you to really probe because, and you'll confirm this. When they started talking about warehouse type buildings, it covered everything from A to Z, from. From very large buildings to, uh, that were simply storage facilities. To buildings which had offices, much, much akin to this, this, this plumbing business we have north of town. Where they had a retail business in the front end of it and then the rest of it in the back. That's, that's the proposed building that the owner would like to put in. It's a very large building.
And then I say they talked about.
It is not a small warehouse and he's, his partner that he works with. Showed us a lot of options of how those buildings could be used, but I sensed that. There was a little bit of difference between their two visions, didn't you? The developer wanted to get that big thing in and the other one was showing all kinds of options of how these buildings could be used.
Some of which could have fit into C2 already.
Been very nice, yes. I'm concerned that, that we commit ourselves to something like that and we end up with, oh my, and and.
The only tax we get from something like this is property tax.
Those don't generate really much either.
If you look at the design of that building though, he has four little boxes on the corners. That's the office space and the rest of it is.
Oh, wow.
So this, the design does not look like a showroom in the front end. And and I want this group to ask lots of questions. I'm, I I talk myself to death in that meeting and this meeting. But I'd like the City Council to really press them and make sure you're satisfied with where we're going with this, so. So, but can Lindsay, who who needs to follow up and make sure they get the packet to everybody?
Soon as we get one.
No, no, he handed two or three documents. The, this was one of them. No, no. He handed pictures, examples, photos, examples of what they would look like and.
But he needs to send.
Not when they first, when it first came across the agenda.
Brought it last week and brought all his packets of pictures, but you, like you said, they didn't fit exactly.
And I, it's the disparity between the two versions concerned.
Get after it with as much documentation as we can on this and. So, I I will follow up with Lindsay and with Ted to ensure that we get what we need to and. We will have that joint session. And and we will do meeting invites for as much as we can on everything that's not seven o'clock on every other Thursday.
I do too.
Maybe we'll do calendar events for everything we ever do. How's that?
That would be awesome.
Lindsay's like, really? Now Lindsay's, Lindsay's awesome with this stuff, so anyway, that was part of. So, um, kind of going along those lines, we are gonna have a joint work session. I'd still like to have the moderate income. Housing strategies follow-up type of thing at some point in time. Maybe we can have a, well, I, we'll talk about that at another time. But one last thing, yeah, go ahead and say it.
Trying to hold that in.
Yes, I was, but one thing we need to be. Diligent about, and I want the planning commission to hear this. Uh, the members of the planning commission and as well as City Council, I would really like to target. Having the general plan adopted by September. I'm gonna say we kind of have to, because this moderate income housing stuff has to be part of the general plan by October 1st. So we better have something really solid by September so that we can tweak anything. That includes going through public hearings and all the things we need to do for the general plan. And it it's a lot of stuff, but we've got to do it. We have two months, basically.
And I just, and I just provided.
Make a motion.
I just provided Janelle with kind of an outline of what like of an approach looked like to getting this approved by September.
Relative to what you just said, Mayor, uh, the planning commission, we talked about the open house and the feasibility of trying to get it done in the summer. And we came to the conclusion we'd probably have to wait until after the summer period when things have settled down a little bit.
I think we can, I think we can do it before. Regardless of whether people are in school or not, I think we should.
Well, school didn't have anything. It's just people have busy schedules and are distracted by a lot of summer things and how many, how, what, how would that impact on the participation? That was the argument given.
The housing thing though, that's, doesn't have to all be adopted. Isn't the report just have to be sent in?
It has to be part of the general plan by October 1st.
October, that has to be.
So in the general plan, you have identified the strategies. And then we have to start on what our implementation plans are for it. That is by October 1st. And this is just me dreaming. We've been working on this general plan for over four years.
I, you need to push the fast button, I understand. I'm just given our past rate of progress. And what you're suggesting, there is a, a quantum leap in the two.
I think the mayor and Ted need to just sit down and talk about that, so, and Janelle. Since you're over the city planning commission.
Okay, that is, that concludes my reports. One last, um, item on the agenda.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we're back to the David Josh on this end making motions. Seconds, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Adjourn. And I, I forgot to show the trophy. And the medal. This is for fishing derby. In case anybody wants to compete at them.